All right, well, welcome again to everybody and, of course, this is our annual council. So the first item on the agenda is the election of chairman to the county council. And do we have nominations for chairman of the county council, please? councillor Hill.
Thank you, chairman, I'd like to nominate councillor Tony Bridges, the current vice chairman of this council, to be promoted to become the chairman of the council. I've known Tony since before he became a county councillor and, as we all know, he is a distinguished gentleman of a distinguished deportment and timber of voice, shall we say. He has had a successful career and also is very engaged locally and nationally actually with voluntary and all good work. So I'm very confident that he will make an excellent chairman for the ensuing civic year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hill. And do we have a second for the nomination? councillor David.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'm delighted to second my friend and colleague councillor Tony Bridges as chairman for the forthcoming year of this council. I've known Tony now for quite a number of years. He's an exceptional gentleman. Kind, considerate, knows his own mind, which I think is always important, doesn't sit on the fence very often. Has run around football fields, he's been a great champion for business and I know he's going to be a great champion in the year ahead for the skills and the young people of this county. And I look forward to working with him closely in that regard. It is absolutely my pleasure to second the nomination and I wish you well, Tony, in this, your civic year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor David. Are there any further nominations from the floor? That being, are we content to accept councillor Bridges as the new chairman of the council? Thank you very much. I shall now ask Tony to accept the chain of office and also sign the declaration. Thank you, Tony. I almost had a job getting it off. I was almost having to say I'll have to do it another year, but I didn't manage it. Welcome the new chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Let me have my speech.
Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, I feel humbled actually and I'm proud to be your chairman for the ensuing year. Lincolnshire County Council, of course, is close to my heart and we've had a chairman in the past year who's absolutely been remarkable, as has his good lady, Dieter. We had them to lunch a few weeks ago and to cement our friendship and it further acknowledged my friendship with them as well as, well, getting to know you both extremely well, Ron. It was a wonderful occasion. So I'd better put my glasses on to see what I'm supposed to say next. The badge of ribbon. So for your year in office councillor Ron Oxby, may I present you with this here on behalf of the councillor? I think that's the right way round this time. Thank you very much for all you've done on behalf of this council.
Thank you.
May I have a round of applause? It says here, it's my speech. Well firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Hill for nominating me and councillor David, who's a good friend of mine, for seconding that proposition. And I hope to serve this council well in my year of office. I'd like to thank my partner Trina, who's sitting there, for all that she has done for me throughout the eight years that we've known each other. And I'm pleased to, I'm sure you will all agree with what I'm about to say. My daughter is sitting in the audience. She's travelled all the way from Tasmania to be here today and her partner Dragon and my son from Cambridgeshire, so I'd like to welcome you all. And thank you very much indeed for coming. I'd better put these glasses on again because I can't see what's going on. Call it vainness. I now would like to invite members to speak on our outgoing chairman councillor Ron Oxby. So if there are any speakers, I'm sure there will be, would you please raise your hand so that I can see you in recognition of Ron's year in councillor Hill?
Very briefly, chairman, thank you, Ron, for your year. We knew it would be a success in your charm and your relaxed manner, as I think gave you, I think new friends, because I think you were most people's friends to start with, but I think you fulfilled the promise of being a very good chairman, a very friendly chairman and not just with council people but also with all those partners as well. And I think it's been a great success, so thank you very much.
Are there any speakers at all? Yes, councillor Parker.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Hill. I think that Ron has set a standard for you to follow, following in the footsteps of Andrew, relaxed, easygoing style, which I think has earned the respect of councillors. And I think that we've been able to do business very well, efficiently, effectively and efficiently. And there's the template for you to follow. Okay, can't say any fairer than that.
Thank you very much indeed. Would you like to... Sorry, councillor Mrs Everton, I hadn't seen you there.
Very much. Our local areas overlap, so I did feel particularly inclined to say a thank you to councillor Ron Oxby for his work in this year as the chairman. He has brought a good humour and an integrity and a friendliness and fairness that's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Newton. Anyone else wishes to speak? Now, in that case, I would just like to close this by wishing you all the best, Ron. I know that you've been given the position in this council for the forthcoming year and we all wish you very, very good and I appreciate all the help you've given me.
I'd like to thank the new chairman councillor Tony Bridges and his partner Trina for their help during this past year of mine. I wish you both well during your term of office, Tony. Every year the outgoing chairman on retiring from the post says what a wonderful year they have had in office and with me it is no exception. I have thoroughly enjoyed my term of office and I've met some truly remarkable people. I hope I have been a good ambassador for the county and I couldn't have done it without the tremendous support I've had from my wife Diane, who often would give me that odd look and ask, "You're not going out dressed like that, are you?" But they always say, "Behind every man, there is a good woman." I will take away many happy memories. A thank you to Rachel Wallace, who kept my civic diary in order during this year. And on Wednesday I completed my final civic duty. I presented a cheque for £1,166 to my chosen charity, St Barnabas Hospice and I thank all who contributed and supported this charity during the year. My own highlight of my term of office was my civic service held at our magnificent cathedral, where quite by chance the choir from Washington DC were visiting and performed during the service. I think those attending wondered how I managed to pull so many strings, but Lady Luck was on my side that day. Finally, my thanks must go to the chaplain for the year. I have to admit, when I asked Rachel to ask the Reverend Canon John Patrick if he would kindly be my chaplain, I was expecting a thank you, but no, assuming he would be too busy attending to the day-to-day running of the cathedral. But when the reply came back that he would be only too pleased, I felt I had won the lottery. Again, a bid thank you to you, John. I am now looking forward reluctantly to rejoining a seat back in the council chamber. Thank you and good luck, chairman.
Right, we go on to election of vice chairman of the county council. I would like to propose as my vice chairman councillor Mike Brooks. I've known Mike for some considerable time. I know that he will do a very good job on behalf of this council. And I would now ask if there is a second for my proposition.
I would like to second the nomination for councillor Mike Brooks as vice chairman. Mike and I go back a few years. We first met at civic functions during the time he was mayor of Boston and I was chairman of Northkiss Even, way back in 2007. I realised he had a dedication, carried out his duties with pride and was a credit to Boston Borough Council, the people of Boston and the surrounding areas. As the chairman and Mike both play golf, I'm sure they will find plenty to talk about during the forthcoming year apart from the civic duties that both will be asked to perform. I am confident that Mike and his lady Jackie will support Tony and Trina to the best of their ability during this forthcoming year and represent the council with pride. It will be a great asset to both the chairman and this council. Finally, I'd like to thank Mike for preparing these few words for me.
Thank you very much, councillor Oxby. Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? In that case, I invite councillor Mike Brooks to take the vice chairman's chair.
Chairman, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank our new chairman councillor Tony Bridges and councillor Ron Oxby, our outgoing chairman, for their kind words and for nominating me and to everyone who's supported me coming forward as deputy leader, sorry, deputy chairman, sorry. I've enjoyed my time as, I've enjoyed my time previously to this as chairman of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee over the last six years and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all the members and officers that have been involved with me over that six years for all the good work that they've done and the help and support that I had while doing that job. So I would say thank you to them. I now look forward, along with my wife Jackie, to supporting chairman Tony and his good lady Trina and working for and doing our best for Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Fellow members, I should, it's remiss of me because I should say that when I first became a Lincolnshire County councillor back in 2013, Mike was the first one sitting there to welcome me and showed me around and I've never forgotten that. And I think that, well, I'm absolutely delighted that he has agreed to become my vice chairman and I look forward to working with yourself and of course your lovely wife, Tricia. So without further ado. Apologies, item three is apologies for absence. Debbie.
Thank you very much, chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Mrs Cooper, councillor Hague, councillor Killie, councillor Reed and councillor Spratt. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Item four, declarations of councillors' interests. Do councillors have any interests they wish to declare? Yes, Kate.
Thank you, chairman. As a small business owner, we have done work for the county council in the past, so I'm going to be abstaining from voting and commenting on Agenda Raisin 14, which is about procurement. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Item five is the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 22nd of February 2019. I will state that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 22nd of February 2019 be approved as correct record and signed by the chairman. All those in favour? Any against? Then I declare those minutes approved and I will sign them later. Colleagues, my chaplain for the year, and I'm sure he's, he will stand up, he's sitting next to my son at the back there, will be Brian Roberts and I look forward to working with you, Brian, and thank you for agreeing to be my vicar, I think, for the forthcoming year. So we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much indeed. Fellow councillors, colleagues, this is Pete Moore's last council meeting after 31 years in the post. He doesn't look old enough. Pete, would you like to stand up so that everyone can see you? As I said, he will be retiring in July. He will be sadly missed. And I would like to thank you, Pete, for your invaluable service to this Lincolnshire County council, the last 19 years of which you were a section 151 officer. And as I said before, you have the best wishes in your retirement of all this, of all councillors here assembled. Thank you. I would like to welcome our three new directors. It's their first time at Lincolnshire County Council and I refer to Andrew Crookham, who is the executive director of resources, and also to James Drury, who is our executive director, commercial, that's right, and our own Andy Gutherson, who in recent days has been elected to the position of executive director of place. So welcome to the three of you. On a sadder note, his funeral was a few days ago and I refer to councillor David Dickinson, who was, represented the Sleaford Electoral Division until his retirement and he was chairman of this council from May 2007 to May 2008. My predecessor councillor Ron Oxby represented us all at his funeral. And I now invite you all to stand and depart with respect and merit. Thank you, colleagues. As you probably all may know, the 135th Lincolnshire Show will take place at the Lincolnshire Showground on Wednesday, the 19th. Yeah, I beg your pardon, yeah. Sorry, I've just been advised that if there are any tributes to councillor Ron Dickinson, councillor Bruce, I think you were next.
Thank you, chairman. David was one of the first ones to welcome me here when I came here a few years ago and he had the most wonderful sense of humour, was a real gentleman. I respected him enormously. And towards the end of his tenure here, because he was only about a mile and a half of my incredibly long journey from the eastern hemisphere here, occasionally I used to pick him up and bring him here and he was a really, really nice chap with a sense of humour and I was a great fan and I would want everybody to know that, chairman. Thank you.
Councillor Hill, I think you want to say a few words.
Thank you, chairman. Obviously, we previously talked about good humour and a light touch and David, he did represent Sleaford for some time, but he was also very much a gentleman of a certain, he wasn't a big chap, but he had a certain sort of presence about him and he was actually quite a strict chairman of this council, but he did it in a way which was almost, there was a bit of humour with it as well. So although he was quite strict with us, he did it in a way that you respected, but also there was quite a lot of humour about what he did. He did represent Sleaford for many years, a very marginal seat and I think also, I think he showed his true colours when he thought he'd lost his seat one year, I think it was back in 2013 and then there was a recount and instead of losing by two, I think he got in by 20, but he accepted all of that. He had suffered from some health problems over recent years, which again, he actually bore with great dignity and without complaints. And also he was even received from an excellent horse trader, which I sold him many years ago and I think he was very lucky to get it, but he shall be missed, but he was the epitome of someone who went into public service for the right reasons and had the right attitude and I think had respect across the whole of the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Strange, you would say a few words?
I do thank you, chairman. I want to couple this with just congratulating you in your elevation. Those happy days at St Hughes School Woodholt Spa when you used to sit behind me and flick my rather large ears. And that's an awful long time ago.
Obviously, you didn't do a very good job.
No, no, I'm still profoundly deaf in my left ear. However, look, the big thing to remember today, putting that on one side is the loss of David Dickinson. I was so sorry that I couldn't get to his funeral. Remember him with great fondness and like our leader, I also remember his wonderful sense of humour. One day I was serving on the committee he was chairing and bemoaning the loss of the village shop in Corringham near Gainsborough. David replied in that languid manner that he did have from the chair. He also thought it sad, however, he and Mona had addressed this problem by having their groceries delivered to their door by Sainsbridge. And he suggested other people in Corringham did the same. The thing about it was that the humour was always there and he brought the house down on that occasion. And yeah, I think he was, he set a standard, didn't he?
He did.
That many of us should try to get somewhere near Maxine, which we'll find it difficult.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, again, I knew David and his wife Mona for many years. David here is a councillor but also knew them socially and he was, as people have said, he was a perfect gentleman and his wife was a perfect lady as well, myself. But no, they were, you know, a lovely couple and I do, as I say, I spent a lot of time with David and his wife and obviously helping to deliver leaflets, as we all do for colleagues when we have elections and as I say, I remember things, him very well. So I would just like to say it was a pleasure and, you know, he was someone who I will remember for a very long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next to speak is councillor Mrs Cork.
Thank you, chairman. I echo the comments made by fellow councillors. In representing Sleaford, David was my predecessor and we served together for a while at NKDC and along with many other Sleafordians, I was very sad to hear of his passing. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Barry Young.
Thank you, chairman. I knew David for many, many years, going back to the early 1980s. Six elections ago, he nominated me for a position on the county council and I'm sure it was largely down to him that, and I'm talking around, that made me win a seat that had been deemed unwinnable for some time. I was also nominated by him in five succeeding elections, so we worked extremely closely together. Part of his district council patch was within my own county council division and there's no doubt whatsoever that his charm and wit and generally gentlemanly behaviour led to helping constituents with their problems in a way that in the past had been very difficult. He was also somebody I mixed with socially. We were members of various organisations, the Soulers Charity springs to mind, as does the Arts Society, where again, he was acknowledged as a perfect gentleman. Here in the council chamber... Here, in the council chamber, as others have said, he brought wit and charm to the position, which I'm sure you will follow. But it will be hard to follow, and we shall miss him sorely.
Thank you very much for that contribution. Councillor Mrs Overton.
Try again. Thank you very much. Councillor David Dickinson worked alongside me as an independent councillor on North Kirstyven District Council for a long time. I think he must have been elected at first time around the same time as me in 1995. And one of his elections was actually on the spin of a coin, would you believe it? So it could have been, sometimes it really shows that every single vote counts. And he took it in good humour, you know, either way. But I really enjoyed his company through all those years. Always friendly, bright, entertaining, with a good humour, a wit and a charm, as was mentioned, which I think brought us all to a point where we recognised there were more important things in the world to worry about than any petty squabbles, you know. The important point was to get on with each other as best as we could and to do the best job possible. And he did that. So much appreciated the time that we worked with him. And I did want to mention his charity work, which I think was picked up. But he did actually do a great deal. And I think that's well worth remembering. The Cathedral Trust, for example, and a number of others, where I think he played a real pivotal role in keeping them thriving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on?
Congratulations to yourself on being appointed chairman.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll look after the few as well as the many.
I'll try my very best.
David Dickinson, as lots have been said really accurately, wit and charm. He always gave me the impression that although council work was important, there were much more better things to be doing with life. And that actually was about the work that he did outside of the council, which came across. I think it's reasonable to point out as chair, he was even handed. But there was always a half a smile on his face about the way that he conducted council business. And for that reason, it lightened the tone sometimes in heavy debates. So our thoughts go to his family, and we think about him with kind regards. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councillor Pocka. Are there any other members who wish to speak? No. In that case, I would like to, at this stage of the proceedings, I would like to welcome our visitors from RAF Waddington, Squadron Leader Jenny Norman. Welcome, Jenny. Officer commanding force development squadron and Flight Sergeant Kieran Shepherd. Thank you for attending, both of you, today. You are the senior non-commissioned officer of physical education flight, is that right? Sounds very important to me. Thank you for attending. I think I may have mentioned earlier, the Lincolnshire Show, the 135th Lincolnshire Show, which is on Wednesday, the 19th and 20th of June. All members will have received, will have received an email regarding this. I hope as many as you as possible will be able to attend. It's a wonderful show. For those that haven't been before, for those that have, obviously, it's a chance to renew acquaintances, et cetera, et cetera. Please let the civic office know if you are attending either on the Wednesday or the Thursday. That would be most helpful. The service of dedication will be held at Lincoln Cathedral on Sunday, the 23rd of June at 3:45pm. So please make a note in the diary. I hope as many members as possible will be able to attend the civic service. And I've already got quite a number of my friends attending. So it would be nice if county councillors outnumbered them to show our support. Right. The civic engagements, I may have mentioned earlier, relating to the immediate past chairman and vice chairman are listed and available from the civic office. So we go on to item seven, which is the leader to report on executive portfolios and appointments to the executive and appointments of its executive support councillors. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. There is, at the back of the green order proceedings, there is a list there of the, of the plan for the future year. The executive will stay the same, including their responsibilities. There is one change in that councillor Storey is standing down and supports councillor Davy. And councillor Barry Dobson will, I'm proposing, will be his replacement on that job. The rest will stay the same.
Thank you very much. Item eight, statements, announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Statements by the members of the executive are detailed as report reference eight point zero in the agenda previously circulated. The leader's annual statement will be circulated separately. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak?
Mr Water, thank you very much. Yes, I will, as is tradition, make a statement to the council about, basically about the year we've had. In an era of 24-hour news, what's important is often drowned out by the trivial. Media outlets desperate to fill bulletins and websites bombard us with overblown political rouse and gossip. In studios, self-appointed experts talk us through the issues, adding noise but little light to the debate. Fake news has added a dangerous new element, as untruths and half-truths muddy the waters even more. That fuels anger and abuse, particularly on social media, when what we need is calm and considered debate. Of course, rational decision-making has almost been entirely absent from Parliament during the Brexit crisis. Determined to block the outcome of the referendum, some MPs have tried every trick in the book to prevent us leaving. Others want to water it down to a thin remain gruel, or Brexit in name only. That's a betrayal of democracy, and those MPs will be punished at the ballot box when voters have their say. The result of all of this has been paralysis in Westminster, where virtually nothing is getting done. At this stage, not even Brexit itself. Around the country, the vast majority of people, however they voted in the referendum, are telling politicians, just get on with it. That message came over loud and clear in the local council elections a fortnight ago, as the two main parties paid a heavy price for failing to deliver on Brexit. Quite rightly, the public want the country to move on to other pressing issues, forging a bright new future outside of the EU. In contrast to the Westminster meltdown, this council doesn't need reminding to get on with the important things. It's what we do every day. Alongside our partners, we continue to provide good, often excellent, frontline services to our 750,000 residents. We're also determined to innovate at every opportunity, making services better than just keeping them the same. As members know, that's no easy task at a time of hugely reduced funding and with both demand and our responsibilities growing. Lincolnshire councils also lose out on £116 million of annual funding compared with the England average, despite the cost of providing services across a large rural area. We'll therefore continue our Fair Deal for Lincolnshire campaign, calling for a local government formula that's fit for purpose. We're also urging the government to finalise its Green Paper on Social Care, which urgently needs a new financing model. Even these, even with these issues unresolved, this authority has achieved an enormous amount over the past 12 months. And I'll highlight some of our key successes today. They cover areas as diverse as roads and broadband, schools and safeguarding, flood risk and fire and rescue, social care and public health. Across the board, we're delivering on things that local people really care about and on the manifesto of this Conservative administration. It's about putting the important above the trivial. It's also about trust, which is in short supply in politics these days. Before I move on, I'd like to welcome the two new executive directors attending their first full council today. James Drury will bring experience and drive to the commercial post, transforming our procurement business and IT. We're also delighted to appoint Andrew Crookham, who will lead resources at a vital time, with Pete Moore due to retire shortly. Congratulations as well to Andy Gutherson and Les Britzman, whose interim roles in charge of place and fire and rescue have been made permanent. They have tough acts to follow in Richard Wills and Nick Burrell, who, along with Pete, deserve the very real thanks of this council. All three have been central to our achievements over many years and wish them well in retirement. Staying with senior members, members will join me in thanking Debbie Barnes for leading them so effectively as head of paid service. She's supported by a strong team, and our new appointments can only make it stronger. Thank you. Turning now to this council's achievements, let's start with our work to protect the vulnerable. As members know, our older population is growing all the time as people live longer and move to the country to retire. To put that in context, we expect context, we expect the number of over 65 to rise to a quarter of a million over the next 20 years. Demand for social care for the younger generation is also going up, together with costs such as the national living wage. Alongside these, government has given us significant extra responsibilities without any additional funding. They include paying the minimum wage for overnight sleep-in services at an extra cost of 1.5 million a year. New criteria around deprivation of liberty safeguarding has also led to huge rise in applications, nearly 5,000 in Lincolnshire last year. A third area is the number of adults with autism eligible for social care, up by 18% in three years. Despite all these pressures, and even as our funding continues to fall, we've balanced the adult care budget for seven years in a row. That's an achievement shared only by a handful of councils and is the result of taking difficult decisions at an early stage. As part of our adult care focus, we're working more closely with district colleagues to improve housing options for older and disabled people. In Lincoln, for example, we're nearing an agreement for a development of a 70 extra care unit scheme and there are schemes in three other areas as well. Closer working is also paying dividends as we help people live independently through adaptations to their homes. Spending on these will nearly be 7 million this year, providing about 400 different types of help, more quickly than in the past. More generally, the NHS in Lincolnshire has started a healthy conversation with communities about how it needs to change. We've been working alongside our partners to ensure robust public debate, enabling the full range of views to feed into any new proposals. We're also encouraging integration between the NHS and the council around neighbourhood teams, transport and other shared issues. Services for young children and young people are another vital part of our work, where our record of achievement is as strong as ever. At key stage two, for example, we've seen an upward trend over the past three years, with a 3% improvement in the last 12 months alone. The percentage of pupils performing well at key stage four is also high, and almost 20% achieve the tough grades needed to achieve the English Baccalaureate. To raise standards further, we've attracted further funding and expertise from the Satriic School Improvement Fund. We've also invested 50 million in Lincolnshire's special schools, creating an integrated system to meet the needs of pupils in their local communities. In the SEND inspection last year, children and young people gave positive feedback about their services developed with input from parents and carers. Across Lincolnshire, we're successfully meeting the demand for new school places and scored a 23 million capital allocation last for this year. Over the decade 2020, more than 90 billion pounds will have been invested in new facilities, helping parents to get schools of their choice. For children starting primary or secondary for the first time, the rate is above 90%, rising to 95% for the reception intake. In other positive news from Children's Services, our Partners in Practice programme is improving the quality of social care, and we've supported Rotherham and other councils as they progress. The Troubled Families Initiative has helped nearly 3,000 local households turn their lives around, as well as attracting significant extra funding. All seven of our children's homes have been judged good, with most praised as outstanding. We have 22 foster care champions working with schools to improve learning, and an adoption podcast was nominated for two national awards. Our 48 children's centres continue to support local families, with almost half celebrating 10 years at the heart of their communities in 2018. Last year also saw the insourcing of public health nursing, enabling us to develop a fully integrated service for children and young people. Already, performance times for health visits have improved significantly, and the service achieved over 60,000 contacts in just 12 months. Another notable success is the Better Births Programme, where joint working is creating a network of community hubs across the county. These offer midwifery, health visiting and other vital services, and have attracted interest from NHS England and other national bodies. On Lincolnshire's roads, 2018 saw a welcome drop of almost 10% in the number of people killed and seriously injured. However, we're never complacent, and bids for the Safer Roads Fund have brought in an extra 2 million for improvements. Upgraded speed cameras, community schemes and awareness courses are also changing driver behaviour. Helped by a mild winter, we fixed over 100,000 potholes last year, as well as resurfacing 85 miles of road. We also coordinated 39,000 permit applications, easing congestion caused by utility and other roadworks. Turning to major schemes, the 124 million Lincoln Eastern Bypass is now really taking shape, with completion due in May next year. We're expecting to start work this summer on the second phase of the Grantham Southern Relief Road. And by the end of the year, Go Segness will be finished, promoting sustainable travel on the coast. To improve transport, we brought concessionary fares back in-house, slashing processing times. We also led the award-winning Poacher Line Rail Partnership, and Call Connect has celebrated its 18th anniversary with a 4% passenger rise. In the south of our county, our Tackle Company is providing bus services where the market has failed to come up with solutions. Our independent travel training and max respect schemes are also reaching out to young people, improving confidence and behavioural awareness. For those with disabilities, business support deals with 17,000 blue badge applications in 2018, with 97% resolved on time. On the environment, our energy for waste plant will reach a significant milestone later this year, when it processes its millionth tonne of waste. It will also have reduced landfill in the county by 92% over a decade and created enough power for 140,000 homes. To keep residents safe, the Wrangle Bank scheme has improved sea defences in partnership with the Internal Drainage Board. We've also successfully completed flood risk and carbon management plans and are now drawing up new ones. In these areas, we're meeting our environmental responsibilities, while still developing a transport network for the 21st century. Obviously, that common sense approach won't be enough for some climate change protesters who are pursuing a radical agenda. Thankfully, we answer the local residents living in the real world and are set our policies accordingly. For ordinary people, jobs and prosperity are the bedrock of strong families and communities. We therefore continue to support economic development, and over the past year have attracted 1.5 million grants to provide superfast broadband to remote communities and businesses, improved the tourism office on the Lincolnshire coast with the opening of the North Sea Observatory, agreed a contract with the University of Lincoln to build a food technology centre in Hull Beach, helped 750 businesses to develop and help manufacturing and held manufacturing and visitor economy conferences. And we've also agreed an economic partnership with China's Hunan province. Our heritage services also continue to innovate, with the Museum of the Moon proving the most successful exhibition in the collection's history. We also lent out 2 million books as county libraries and looking forward to invest in their IT. More generally, we've been consulting on the future of More generally, we've been consulting on the future of heritage services to place it on a more sustainable footing and enhanced provision. Inevitably, that has attracted some opposition, particularly from a vocal minority seeming keen to preserve the Esti Gallery in Aspic. While everyone's views will be taken into account, it is our duty to look at the bigger picture across Lincolnshire as a whole. Above all, we must ensure our heritage offer is attractive and relevant to a new generation of visitors. That will protect the past, not just for the present, but also for the years to come. It's also been a very positive year for Lincoln Fire and Rescue, which received a good inspection report, as well as dealing with twenty-three thousand calls and ten thousand incidents. We're now investing nearly ten million in new vehicles and equipment, ensuring the service remains strong and among the best resourced in the country. To improve efficiency and save money, the Blue Light Programme has developed a combined fire and ambulance service in Sliver. In Lincoln, that process will go even further when the twenty-one million tri facility, also involving the police, opens in South Park later this year. Of course, Blue Light is just part of a wider drive towards shared public premises across Lincolnshire. Called One Public Estate, and led by this council, it has already developed coordinated, co-located services in Spalding and in Boston. Another central service to public safety is Trading Standards, who have removed one and a half million illicit and counterfeit cigarettes from sale, prosecuted a used car dealer for selling a dangerous car and impersonating a trading standards officer, and worked with fire and rescue to share information relating to house fires involving consumer products. To support the most vulnerable, Public Protection have commissioned county-wide domestic abuse service worth nine hundred thousand pounds a year. Last but not least, the Registration and Celebratory Service enjoyed a ninety-eight percent level of customer satisfaction, and has retained its excellent status. It's also providing help to EU citizens wanting to stay in the UK after Brexit under a new settlement scheme. Fellow members, I've mentioned briefly the cuts to our funding, with our main government grant falling by ninety per cent in just eight years. Shire counties like ours lose out massively to urban areas, which is why there'll be no let-up in our Fair Deal funding campaign for Lincolnshire. Although the government hasn't yet announced how future financing will work, there are signs that our lobbying is reaping rewards. Taking last year and this year together, we've been awarded twenty-four million pounds of additional funding to help meet the most pressing challenges. They include the cost of delivering rural services, adult care winter pressures, the overall rise in demand for care, and the need for more road repairs. In other words, the government has, to a limited extent, already listened to our concerns and put its hand in its pocket. For the future, however, we need far more. Above all, we must see a positive outcome to the local government funding review, whether that's in twenty twenty or in the following year. We also require major change around social care financing, the subject of the long-awaited green paper. As we wait for the government to deliver on these, we had no choice this year, but increased council tax by four point nine five per cent, including the two per cent for adult care. This rise will help us limit the use of our reserves to three million, ensuring that we keep enough for difficult future years, as well as strengthening our tax base. Even with the increase, we will remain one of the lowest-charging English Shire counties, a position we're determined to maintain. However, that now demands action from the government, which must resolve the Brexit impasse and move on to other urgent issues. Until it does, we'll continue to make every pound of taxpayers' money go as far as possible, protecting and investing in frontline services. It's what Lincolnshire Conservatives promised in our manifesto two years ago, and we won't go back on our word. Turning now to the Serco contract, significant performance improvements have led us to extend the bulk of the arrangements until twenty twenty-two. At the same time, we took back certain key services, including professional people management, with fifty-one staff moving across to join us. In other HR developments, a governance review into our culture and values built on the success of our twenty seventeen employee survey. The survey showed that ninety-six of those employees taking part felt supported, while eighty-eight per cent had pride in working for the council. I can also report that sickness levels are in line with the national standard of six years, six days a year. Council staff turnover of eight point seven per cent remains below industry levels. Children's services have reduced social worker vacancies to just five per cent. Our reported gender pay gap is two point one per cent, well below the national average. Looking to the future, we now have one hundred and sixty-seven apprentices in our ranks. The payroll function is also greatly improved, and the Pay Statement Project has overcome difficulties to reach a successful conclusion. Fellow members, the annual view of this kind inevitably just scratches, scratches the surface of what we've achieved in the past year. Dig deeper, and you'll find innovations and improvements across every single one of our many service areas. That's a testament to the dedication of councillors from across this chamber, as well as the officers on the front line of delivery. With all, as with all organisations, it's about teamwork, setting common goals and then working together to achieve them. For the local authorities, of course, the focus is always on providing the best possible services for our residents, and we're committed to doing that in Lincolnshire, even as our funding falls, demand rises, and extra responsibilities are passed to us. I spoke earlier about the possible betrayal of Brexit, and therefore the democratic process itself, as the Westminster paralysis continues. Here in Lincolnshire and at this authority, we do things better than that. When we're voted into office, we roll up our sleeves, and we deliver what we promised, and long may that continue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill, for that informative report. We now go on to item nine, which is questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors, chairman of committees, and subcommittees. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow forty-five minutes for questions, expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time allocated. And when invited to ask their question, councillors should press the large button on their microphones to make it live, and press it again to switch it off once they have been finished speaking. And I have first on the list councillor Alexander Maughon for councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, chairman. A1 road safety is a key concern for residents in my division, who rely on that road every day to get to school and work. I understand recently that Highways England have undertaken a safety audit on the stretch of the A1 from Stamford to Blyth in Nottinghamshire. Can the executive member for Highways please update the council on his department's discussions with Highways England, with particular reference to the A1 access points and slip roads between Grantham and Newark? Thank you.
Thanks for the question, councillor Maughon. You're absolutely right. Highways England, after some pushing from us and local members of parliament, have undertaken a very large piece of work that's looked at that entire stretch of road. I think anecdotally, and myself and yourself, who live relatively close to it, would argue it's without doubt one of the most dangerous stretches of the A1, and that certainly seems to be borne out by the study, which isn't completed yet. In terms of interim results, they are suggesting from the analysis that despite local views, the vast majority of accidents aren't in and around junctions. Primarily, the problems are caused by shunting, which is the different, different speed of vehicles as approaching each other, and people are going to the back of other cars, rather than pulling out in front. And, you know, locally, the view is very much that some of the junctions are dangerous. I think there's certainly undoubtedly a problem with slip roads, and we've got ongoing developments there that we're talking about separately that I know are of consideration. In terms of next stages, we are meeting with Highways England, Nottinghamshire County Council, and Rutland Council in the coming weeks, because of all of us, as authorities have a skin in this particular game, and will obviously be reporting back following that.
Thank you very much. Next on my list is councillor Rob Parker for councillor Martin Hill.
Yeah, a question, Martin. You'll be aware that the Treasury is consulting over exit payments to senior staff at the moment. The question is, these packages are likely to be, it's up for consideration, at least a hundred thousand pounds is the ceiling. In relation to that consultation exercise, no doubt local governments have been consulted, and either through the LGA or through this council. Would you like to tell us the position that you think ought to, ought to be the case? Would you be in favour of capping senior officers' pay on exit or not? And do you think that the proposals that are being put forward are yet another intervention by central governments into employment practices in local government?
Yes, thank you for the interesting question. Yes, I mean, obviously, the governments, because there seems to be an obsession in, with MPs and government in particular, on the pay of our executive, for example, our senior officers, and they don't seem to sometimes appreciate the very complex and difficult job that they do actually do. As part of that, there's been sort of some focus, shall we say, on packages when people do leave. And I think it is a double-edged sword here, because I think it is difficult to defend to the public that the fact that sometimes people go out with large packages, but bearing in mind, sometimes the figures quoted also include the pension, the pension entitlement, which is obviously over the lifetime of the person who's leaving, so sometimes can be misleading. And as we've found with the changes to the taxation rules in terms of when people take their pension, there can sometimes be unintended consequences. For example, there is a whole plethora of doctors and senior teachers, and indeed council officers, who are actually leaving because, because of the new taxation rules. So what you end up with is a lot of people probably retiring early from roles when probably they have a, a lot of more work to do and more, more to give. And in reality, what happens is many people then, as is the case with medical people, they then come back part-time and work, probably get the same income, but also work fewer hours, but also from an organisational point of view, of course, you then have less, the organisation has less control, shall we say, a management control of them, which is a persistent problem for us, particularly in Lincolnshire. So I think whilst understanding that there is an obvious focus when these large sums of money are quoted, sometimes they include pensions, which is, if you live for, say, thirty years or whatever, that will be a lot. And I think it should be a local discretion. I think you're right, this is a matter for local discretion. We are elected locally, and whatever decisions we make about whether people leave or whatever other issue is, we will have to justify that in the, in the round. And I think it's unfortunate that it's yet another example where government seems to want to meddle, shall we say, for the sake of some, sometimes rather cheap headlines. You know, I get sick of hearing that, you know, the chief executive earns less than the prime minister. It's not a direct comparison, it's not fair. It actually demeans what the important, very important work that this council does, and others across the country, actually delivering those services to vulnerable people and making sure everything works well. So I think that's, I would, I would not support interference, but I think it's incumbent on all of us to make sure that we do get the best value for money for people, and make sure that we don't just let people leave earlier. There was a culture many years ago in local government where many people left early. The, the rules on pension entitlement have been rightly tightened up. My view is they should be tightened up even more, because the pension strain on, for public services is massive on this country, and it was something else needs to be done to actually sort it out.
Thank you. Next on the list is councillor Barry Dobson for councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Davis, yes, as you know, I'm going to talk about the A15 between Market, oh, is it on? Yeah, Market Deeping and Bourne. We have three villages along there. There are, there's an intersection at Langtoff, which has seen huge increases of traffic due to the large developments north, in Bourne and north of Bourne, and the new quarry licences which have been given out, where we see heavy, heavy vehicles leaving both at East End and West End of that intersection. There is also the junction at King Street, where traffic stops to get into King Street and holds up all the traffic on the A15. And there is also the one at Thelby, which is the, the village which doesn't have a crossing, and where old people have to catch a bus, go to the next stop, cross where there is a controlled crossing, and then go on to the place that they were going to go to. Taking crossing the road there at peak times is extremely hazardous, and for old people, as the population grows, even more dangerous. So as we are continuing to build houses in this area, can I seek your assurance that we, as a council, are looking at improving these facilities along the road, especially at Langtoff, King Street, and Thelby? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dobson, for the question. I think it's very interesting, the follow-on from the previous question, because your residents in particular will be all too familiar with the consequences of road safety. When we look at the accident history in particular on that stretch of the A15, there have been a number of fairly horrendous accidents in recent years. I'm pleased to report that we, with your support, we got together a group of parishes along that stretch of the A15, and we've begun already feasibility studies for each of those key points, looking at what can be done to improve them. We've obviously had one pedestrian crossing going in already. I think Thelby stands rightly in result of the feasibility work we've done, looking at a very likely candidate for another one. I'm pleased that local parish councils are coming forward and helping to look at these problems and also seek sources of funding, because as we can appreciate, that's key. I think one of the things it does draw upon slightly south of Thelby is the issue we have around development and industrial development and road use. I think we need to work harder on how we mitigate the impact heavy goods vehicles. I'm pretty sure that almost every member of the authority will have streets in their division that are damaged and residents' lives frankly blighted by HGVs. And I accept that using the route that the sat nav tells them is the most appropriate, but I think we need to work harder to make sure these developments route traffic in a way that doesn't hinder the lives of, of people who live in our communities. The A15 in particular, I think, cuts through, and almost, I mean, we saw this when we did a recent visit, didn't we, in Langtoff? It literally slices the village in two, and at peak times, you're living in two villages. And that can't be right when facilities such as the church and the pub, and the pub are the other side of the road to where all the houses are. We do need to do more to link these communities together. And of course, if we can make them more public transport friendly, we can also do something to reduce the amount of, and then the volume of cars. But absolutely committed to working to, and I look forward to potentially crossings, a couple more crossings maybe opening up on that stretch of the road in not-too-distant future.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Sarah Parkin to councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Bradwell, Theresa May has rejected calls this week for a public inquiry into cases where parents with a record of domestic abuse and violence have been allowed unsupervised contact with their children. In fact, nationally, four children have tragically been killed in such circumstances over the last five years. Can councillor Bradwell give us some assurance that the family court here in Lincolnshire take a different stance to that, and are now are not allowing violent and coercive abuses unsupervised contact with their children? Thank you.
Yes, I can, and I think you being on children's services will know how well our social workers work with the courts, and how we do protect every child that we need to protect here. I don't remember reading that quote this week, what she made. I know she was making a quote about all councils taking some responsibility for crisis housing for families who are subject to domestic abuse, and that, you know, we're looking, she's looking at us having a board, which I think is very good, that the council would then sit with the district councils and other agencies. I thought that was wonderful, so I must have missed that other bit. But no, I can assure this council that, you know, our, our children's services is very, are very good, and, you know, parents are taken to court when they need to be taken to court, and children are taken into foster care or, or adoption when needed. But we wouldn't do that, as you know, on, on a whim, but I just think that, I think it's known that we are very good at doing the right thing at the right time.
Councillor Bradwell, would you be happy for me to send over the article that I've been reading? I think it'll give a slightly different kind of angle to what, yeah, lovely, thank you, thanks very much. Yeah, lovely, thank you.
Thank you to you both. Next question is from councillor Paul Key to councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you. Yeah, Richard. Councillor Davis, I would like to draw your attention to Roper Road in Gainsborough. Around six weeks ago, I distributed some self-made surveys along Roper Road, and I received twenty-five responses. The overriding issue was speeding vehicles, closely followed by damage to parked cars caused by such vehicles. I feel the erection of speed cameras would be the only solution to solving these issues. Now, is my question, is can you assure me and my constituents that the issue in relation to speed on Roper Road in Gainsborough... to speed on Roper Road in Gainsborough is looked into and addressed at the appropriate moment? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I can absolutely assure you we'll look into that. Happy to do a site visit with you if that's appropriate and take a look. I can say at this point it's very unlikely speed cameras would be installed. Legislation requires there to be significant, serious accident history before we can install, we could install them. But I think working with the local policing team, as well as our own highways officers and the road safety partnership, we may be able to look at that issue, because it's, and it's not just with you, I'm sure there are lots of areas, and we are looking at this more broadly as well. Definitely coming up. Thank you. Cheers, Paul.
Thank you. Can I just ask, we have quite a number of questions, and we are running out of time, so please keep your questions as concise as possible. The next question is from councillor Colin Matthews to councillor Eddie Poll.
Thank you, chair. Congratulations on your new role, and I'd like to pass on my thanks to Ron. He, I'm a relatively new member of the council, and he treated me as a peer from day one, and that was really, made me feel very comfortable. Thank you very much. Eddie, it's two for the price of one, I'm afraid. The Environment Agency completed phase one of its consultation strategy on the Gibraltar Point to sort for the sea defences. Can we sleep safe in our beds at night in Sutton-on-Sea, well, safe from the risk of flooding at least, as of following that consultation? And secondly, in Sutton-on-Sea, we're very interested in the idea of a tidal pool or an inland marina or a land pier, which are all ideas expressed in the consultation as something that could add value to the Environment Agency government's spend on those sea defences, but would help extend the tourism season and increase income by adding value to that cost. Okay.
Firstly, yeah, thank you for the question, Colin, and congratulations to you, chairman, on your elevation to the high chair. I look forward to sharing a parking space with you as successfully as I did with your predecessor. Although I do question your type of car. But anyway, the, as you quite rightly said, Colin, the current beach nourishment scheme, commonly known as Linkshore, is only funded until 2021, so we do need an alternative, longer-term solution around that issue, because although the funding may be secured going forward for the beach replenishment schemes, the law of diminishing returns is coming up very, very closely, when it will be no longer possible to raise the height of the defence to cope with sea level rise, because we won't be able to go wider. And the reason we can't go wider is really quite obvious, and yet the dune system is prevented from rolling inland as it would naturally, because we've built behind it. So it's probably, those sorts of problems, we're going to have to get around. So as you said, there have been many engagement events over the past two or three years, and they've produced a shortlist of options, and they include the segmentation of the frontage to enable local interventions that are according to the risk being involved. There could be changes to the nourishment programme, there could be different sediments put on the beach, or even the construction of control structures, and I think this is probably where the second part of your question comes in, really, because large infrastructure projects such as that these days require a partnership funding, and also they also are required to provide additionality. And additionality is that bit you were talking about, where other people get involved in their construction and put them to alternative uses. And a good example of that was, a couple, three years ago, I happened to be on holiday in Wales, and in Colwyn Bay, they were building a groin to try and prevent the loss of the beach. And they were, the local council said, well, that's really useful, because we need a new car park. So they made it a flat-top groin, and now you get a wonderful car park with a wonderful sea view. So, I mean, that sort of thing could really enhance the tourism potential down our coastal stretch. It doesn't have to be car parks, it could be cafes, it could be a new pier. And in the, I believe there's one on the south coast where they built a large fishtail groin, and on the Leavitt side of that, they managed to get a marina in. So there are all sorts of commercial opportunities around the construction of large infrastructure projects along the coast. So as part of a public consultation that starts on the third of June, we would like to hear any ideas and suggestions from organisations, businesses or individuals as to how this may be achieved. So please pass on your interest in the project, we'll take them into consideration. But yes, you can sleep safe in your bed, within reason. Thank you.
Congratulations to both you and your vice-chair. Hope you enjoy time together. Right, councillor Worf, councillor Worf, at a recent community scrutiny meeting that we had on the April the third, your written comments in the Belgate Independent were discussed. That statement that you made was the Usher Gallery was not fit for purpose for environment and security reasons. Could you therefore tell me today what displays have been turned away for the reasons you gave? Thank you.
Thank you, Gav, for that. It was April Fool's Day, obviously, just noting that date. The environmental issues that are talked about, if you take two of, two major exhibitions, the Great Exhibition and Battles and Dynasties as an example, there were a number of very specialised exhibits that came with that exhibition, and the people that were donating those exhibits to the exhibition were very specific about the environmental controls that were needed for those particular items. And as it happened at that time, a number of those items could not be displayed in the Usher Gallery. Some of them had to be displayed in the collection, but they, it was to do with the environmental conditions that they specifically required for those exhibits. That doesn't mean to say that other exhibitions cannot be held in the Usher Gallery. It all depends on what the specifications are given by the loner of the exhibit. So some can be held in the Usher Gallery, but some will be very specific. The environmental conditions in the collection can be controlled. What the Usher Gallery is, effectively, is an old, old-built, old house, so the environmental conditions in there are much more difficult to control. I hope that, it's quite a, quite a long subject. I know councillor Park has had quite an in-depth kind of briefing on it as well. It's not something that is easy to explain, because every exhibit that kind of comes, every exhibition that comes probably comes with different environmental conditions. Always saying is that the environmental conditions in the Usher that, for the existing exhibits, are fine, but if there's specific exhibits coming in there, they can be not appropriate for that, for the Usher Gallery. I hope that kind of explains it as best I can.
Thank you very much for that. The next question is from councillor Marianne Oberton for councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you very much. Your postbox, like my postbox, is still the biggest in, of everything, is to do with the safety on our rural roads. In my area, we have had some serious accidents, some tragic accidents, not necessarily, you know, we don't always know what the cause is, but actually, when you look at it overall, I think it's rural roads and the safety of them is really one of our top priorities. We have in our area a change in the policy, we understand, where rural roads that are not link roads are going to have to wait for a guideline of up to ninety-nine zero days for repairs of a pothole if it's more than four centimetres deep. I think a pothole that's more than four centimetres deep is dangerous, especially if you're on a bike or a bicycle or a motorbike. Our roads, our rural roads are narrow and lit and with sharp bends going round the edge of fields, and people cannot understand how we can leave them in such a poor state for so long, even when they've reported them. Can we have assurances that you will not leave dangerous potholes in place for as much as three months, but concentrate on getting them repaired much more quickly and thoroughly repaired? And we, I know you've said before that you and I, we would like them properly repaired so that they don't just tip out again at the next opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. It may be worthwhile me furnishing you a copy of our pothole policy, because in there there's quite an extensive section on how we deal with dangerous potholes, and the whole purpose of changing slightly at the margins our approach to repairing the roads is to give ourselves more flexibility to exactly get to the dangerous potholes quicker. I think the reality is there are plenty of areas of the road network in Lincolnshire where we would all agree aren't perhaps a priority, and it's exactly those dangerous potholes that we need to get to and defect more quickly. That is entirely the purpose of the new policy, and I will email you a copy of it so you can get up to speed on it.
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations to both of you. Richard, I had inquiry from a residence from one of the villagers. She rang me, she was on the phone for about half an hour complaining. She set off on her usual duty to the bus stop, kindly waited for the bus. The bus came along and told her she couldn't get on the bus, because there was already a chair already on that bus, so she had to wait an hour for the next bus. If you can sit with the bus company, see what we can do, or if we've got anything in to say she had to wait, because she did say to me, there's no shop in the village, no post office, so she has to go to Lough, and she had to wait for that extra hour to go on to that bus to do her shopping. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I gather that you're suggesting it was a disabled member of your, one of your residents. Yeah, that's very unfortunate. I'm sorry to hear that happen. I know it does happen occasionally, but if we meet outside of this and get the details, I'll get the team to look into it and see if there is anything we can do, especially if that's going to be a regular route. We really need the bus company to be prepared for that particular lady, as and when she's travelling, don't we?
And the next question I have is from councillor Mark Whittington to councillor Richard Davies. Shall we go busy today, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and many congratulations to yourself and to your vice-chairman on your election. Richard, my question relates to the Grantham Southern Relief Road, which, as you know, a vast chunk of it is in the area I represent. Been contacted by a large number of residents, as you're aware, the, there's been a delay in the process of the building due to a number of planning objections that went through. And now that they've actually gone, people have contacted me, because obviously, there's big concern in Grantham with the A fifty-two through traffic going through, and the Southern Relief Road is designed to alleviate that problem. And also, it's very much linked in to the economic development of Grantham, and some of our residents are sort of saying, oh, it's never going to be built, it's never going to be completed. Please, could you give an update and some assurances that the road will be going ahead and that it will be completed? Thank you very much, you leave, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the question, councillor Whittington, and thank you for the intervention, councillor Potter. Yeah, absolutely right. One of the county's key capital schemes that has, have to say, not been the smoothest of implementations, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to report that the public inquiry we went through at the beginning of the year was successful, and the expiry period for that public inquiry has expired, has gone through, and no further objections have been raised, which means that in the coming weeks, we're establishing the site compound. Some, I've actually been contacted this morning by an Eagle Eye resident who's noticed some earthworks have already been gone, so we can, we're in a position to crack on with phase two, leading on to phase three. Phase two being that all-inport and junction, about a twenty million pound scheme to link the road to the existing bit of road that's been built, and it's going to involve a cut-and-cover tunnel under the A one. It's an incredibly important scheme. It moves the A fifty-two out of Grantham and opens up that land, but I'm pleased that we finally are in a position to crack on and build the rest of the road.
Councillor Davis, I'd like to talk to you about internet speeds. I did hear councillor Hill mention in his speak that we have invested a lot of money, and I know we have, and I can remember tending with you and councillor Davy when the first Green Cabinet was in fact installed in the county in Spalding. But only this week, I've had an email from a resident in Horseshoe Road saying that they, if they're lucky, the maximum they can get is six point seven megabytes, rather than ten times what they're promised in their contract from BT, and they're often having to use their mobile phone rather than their laptop to do job applications and other work. And I'm really wondering when we're going to be up to speed in the county, particularly the south of the county and some of the outlying areas. This particular lady lives one point eight kilometres from a Green Cabinet, and clearly it's not acceptable for areas like this, that's also got an industrial area where the speeds are so bad. What are we doing in our county to update the internet speed, please? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. On Lincolnshire, I have to say, is one of the most rewarding pieces of work I've had the pleasure to be involved with. Since the initiation of the project about four years ago, we've seen a hundred and fifty-one thousand properties see their broadband speeds go from less than eight megabits per second to superfast broadband speeds, which is in excess of twenty-four megabits per second. The reality is, we're up at about the ninety-three percent in terms of the number of premises that can average that speed. However, obviously, that does mean that seven percent of premises are unable to access superfast broadband still. Our next stage is the Contract Three section of the On Lincolnshire project, is we're going out for a county-wide additional tier of infrastructure, fairly technology-agnostic, so that could result in some wireless, further wireless networks being established that kind of pick up these knotspots, of which, and I'm particularly familiar with Horseshoe Road, considering other issues that are going on of late in that neck of the woods, that will hopefully pick up those areas. I can't guarantee that everybody in Lincolnshire in the next three or four years will get a hundred percent availability of superfast broadband, but I think there's no reason we can't get to ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. It does highlight a real frustration, I think I and others do, that BT are, I mean, if only their billing team did their operations, I think everybody would have much faster broadband. The reality is, they are still charging people full whack for broadband speeds they're not getting. It's a disgrace. You wouldn't get away with it in almost any other service area in terms of the private sector. I know the government's looking at this, but I mean, in terms of that individual resident, very happy to get the team to follow up, and there may be something that could be done. One point eight Ks is getting to the end of where we can go, but there may be a forward plan for that area, especially if there are other premises in the area. So drop me an email and we'll look into it.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. The next question is from councillor Mrs. Christine Taylor to guess who?
Taylor?
Sorry, Talbot, I beg your pardon. I do beg your pardon.
It's almost as bad as someone calling the leader Roger on Monday afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment and also to the vice-chairman. I hope you have a very successful year. My question is to Richard, and it's following the recent site visit some of us were on to the eastern bypass. And I was just wondering, because I was absolutely amazed at the amount of environmental care that's being taken in its construction, not only with the spoil and all the crushed stone being used, et cetera, to help with the alleviation of the traffic through Lincoln City. But I just want you to understand, and I think the public need to understand, because I think they're all fed up of just talking about the road, when you think of all the conservation work that's gone on, I'm just wondering whether we could just be a bit more communicative with our residents, that there's all that lovely work going on, badger tunnels, the protection of the bats, and the alleviation of the water that's coming that will eventually be piped, so it doesn't actually flood the bypass when it's completed from the one five eight down to Washinborough.
Yes, councillor Taylor's absolutely right. The work that's gone into, road schemes, people often say, well, you can build a road, it's ever so easy, especially in Lincolnshire, because it's so flat. However, we seem to spend most of our time either digging through hills or under hills or over rivers or over, under railway bridges. The civil engineering that has gone into the Lincoln Eastern Bypass is breathtaking, and I don't say that flippantly, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the recent visits we've done with members of the local community, local members and parish councils, they have been quite shocked at the amount of work that's been undertaken. And if anybody else does get the opportunity to visit, and we will be arranging further visits, please do. When you get to the top of the hill and you look back and see what's gone and the amount of materials, and just a couple of points to extrapolate on what Christine has said, in terms of the environmental potential impact of the scheme could have been even more substantive than it is, but by reusing material on-site, we're able to reduce vehicle movements, we're able to send far less material to waste. We have put in significant amounts of water management schemes, and of course, not only that, but the work that's gone on in the quarry to reduce the impact...
Apologies, councillor, Mrs. Talbot. Right, the next question I have is from councillor Robin Renshaw to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations to you and the vice-chair.
Thank you.
Fix My Street reports are coming back to as requiring no further action, when monitoring reveals on-site that the potholes are still there, the keep-left bollards are still unlit at night causing danger, and that tree branches, large tree branches which are a risk to pedestrians in the city of Lincoln are still prevalent. I noticed that not only Lincoln suffers from this problem, but also as reported in Media Links 24, that it's also commonplace across the county. When will this Fix My Street IT be fixed?
I have to say, I think it's slightly take issue the idea it's commonplace. There are with any system that involves the interfacing of people and computers issues from time to time, and we are talking about a system that handles over 120,000 inquiries a year, the vast majority of which are fairly routine inquiries that go through relatively easily. However, there are issues around the periphery, where there's an issue around the intervention level, and I think the system can work better, and we're constantly improving it, to provide more feedback to residents, because unfortunately, the harsh reality, and I've stood here countless times and said this, is we can't do everything that people want to have, what would like us to do. And we've heard already this morning, people asking about things that should be done, but we're not necessarily doing how they'd like them to. We do need to prioritise, and of course, the work that Fix My Street does is around giving members of the public as much information as possible. I think we need to, having established a baseline now, I think the next stage of work on the project and on the system is to explain to people more often why if we're not going to do something, we're not, and potentially if that's going into a larger plan, which is very often the case, when that's likely to happen. But I don't think it's broken, it just could do a much better job, frankly, as we all could.
Thank you, councillor Davies. The next question is from councillor Alison Walston to councillor Eddie Paul.
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations and to the vice-chairman, who I have also congratulated, but don't forget my words of wisdom about unruly classes of schoolchildren, of teenagers. Right. My question for councillor Eddie Paul, not councillor Davies this time, concerns the Boston Household Waste Recycling Centre. It's been brought to our attention, as you know, that people are being turned away from the new facility on Bitten Way, especially at weekends, and this is particularly with garden waste because the compacters are full. And this is usually involving the sort of material that is unsuitable for curbside collections, maybe larger pieces of tree and hedge. Now, this is a serious problem, and of course, we are also very concerned about fly tipping that may be a consequence. Clearly, it's not practicable to book in advance when bringing in garden waste, and this spike, to use your own words, councillor Paul, in demand at weekends is quite predictable and should have been, not have been taking the operators or this council by surprise. And this was never an issue, it was always managed at the previous site of Slippery Gout. Right, councillor Paul, please will you give us some assurance that you will consider what practical measures can be taken by LCC to prevent ongoing recurrence of this problem at our Boston site, please? This was, I'd like to remind you all, identified as a potential problem before this facility was ever built. Thank you.
Firstly, thank you for the question, Alison, and I, by the way, I haven't seen Richard for a while, so I hope he's well, and please pass my best wishes. Yes, this is a problem that we have at most of our sites. People tend to do all their gardening on the same day, unfortunately, and bring us all their rubbish on the same days. And despite our best efforts to start the weekend with empty skips and empty compacters, you fill them up too quickly. So I guess the only way we can do that practically is if you came on a Friday, or maybe a Thursday, or maybe a Wednesday, you know, the bloody place is open seven days a week. If you're all going to leave until Sunday to come, then there's bound to be an issue. So please, use your influence that you have to try and get residents to come at different times, and we'll do our best to make sure that the compacters are empty when you turn up and that we can take your waste streams, because we don't want to, we don't want to turn anybody away, and as you say, because sometimes turning people away leads to fly tipping, which causes us a bit of an issue. So as long as those, those waste streams can be managed, then nobody's turned away. And indeed, I know that the site operators on many occasions have helped particularly the elderly to not go away with a couple of bags in the back of the car, but certainly turned away people who turn up with trailers full of it, who can quite easily store it until the next day when they could come back. So it requires a bit of give and take on all sides. We're also undertaking a complete root and branch revision of the household waste recycling centres, the transfer stations, and indeed even looking as far as our partners, you know, Waste Collection Authorities, premises, their depots and stuff, to see if we can ease these problems, to create more storage space in there for more space for people to put their refuse into when they bring it to us, because we do really appreciate the fact that so many people across the county bring their refuse to our waste recycling centres rather than just dump it in the dyke, and we'd like to encourage that. So thank you.
Councillor Wilson, you can come back if it's a point of information.
Just for a point of information, yes, my retired husband could take it on a Monday or a Tuesday, but the majority of people are working every day of the week, so that, I think, is why it is a predictable spike.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Ray Wooton to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many congratulations to you both on your appointment. My question to councillor Hill is, this week marks 1,000 days since the Grantham Hospital has been closed overnight. The ULHT five-year vision plan proposes to transform Grantham into a 24/7 urgent treatment centre. However, unlike Skegness Hospital, it will not be a 24/7 walk-in facility but via 111 out-of-hours. Does councillor Hill agree with campaign groups and councillors that this should be a walk-in facility 24/7 and not subject to a 111 call overnight? Thank you.
Yes, the short answer is yes, I do agree. Obviously, as I mentioned in my speech, there is the consultation which the NHS is undergoing at the moment about these matters, and I think most council members here would agree that what's being proposed is probably as good as we could expect, and it's pretty good news for Grantham, as councillor Wooton has said, there will be, Grantham will be a very busy hospital if these plans come to fruition, and the good news is that we'll be open 24 hours a day. But I think there is a concern locally that what we understand as open 24 hours a day means you can walk in 24 hours a day and get some, at least get some sort of advice from a clinician of some description. I don't think if the doors are closed and it's a 111 is anybody's reasonable definition of a walk-in. And we are talking about, of course, the second, apologies to Boston, the second largest settlement in Lincolnshire, which is going to have a huge number of new houses which will come forward in due course. So I think the very least we could expect is to have that walk-in, otherwise, you know, I think members from that area, indeed this council, will have difficulty in agreeing the proposal if it's just going to be relying on 111 in the early hours.
That concludes all the questions. We're just slightly over time, but not to worry. Agenda item 10 is the political balance on committees and subcommittees, an allocation of places to political groups. Is there a mover and a seconder to this?
Thank you, Chairman. You'll find this report on page 57 of your papers, and the political balance stays the same, there's no change from the last council chairman. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder to that? Thank you very much indeed. Are there any speakers on this item? Right, well, it's being proposed and seconded. Can we now take a vote? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? No, then I declare that that is carried. So the political balance on committees and subcommittees, an allocation of places to political groups, is in your capable hands, councillor Mrs. Bockley. Item 11, appointment of chairman and vice-chairman of committees and subcommittees except the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board, Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire and Bourne Town Hall Trust Management Committee. A report by the executive director of resources has been circulated, which you can probably read. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's my pleasure to move this. They have been circulated, and confidence that the new chair, proposed chairpeople, Mrs. Boquet, councillor Skinner, and councillor Adams, and the new vice-chairs, councillor Oxby and Matthews of various committees, be recommended to fill the posts which have become vacant.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that?
Seconded, Chairman.
Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, we'll take a vote now. Those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Right. Item 12 is the calendar of meetings for 2019, 2020. A report by the executive director of resources has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the report is in your packs, and the calendar itself is on page 71 and 72, so move it, Chairman. Thank you.
And may I have a seconder for that? Councillor Parker, you're going second, thank you. Are there any speakers on this, this item? Okay, can we take a vote now? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions?
No, then that is carried. Item 13, overview and scrutiny annual report 2018/19. A report by the statutory scrutiny officer has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
If we look at page 73, if we're interested, and I mean that nicely, we have the overview and scrutiny annual report, which brings together the work of all the scrutiny committees and the scrutiny panels that we've, that's been undertaken during the last year. Because the council is split, as we know, into an executive and scrutiny, the vast majority of councillors, 60 or so, are on scrutiny committees, and this is the work that we come to county offices to do, which essentially is to scrutinise the work of the executive and to look at, in a, I think, systematic way, at the different areas that we have responsibility for. I think that I'd want to make a couple, a couple of points by way of looking into the report by comparing what we do in the past to what we might be doing in the future. The current arrangements were set up two years ago at the beginning of this council, June 2017, and we agreed at that particular point to undertake a review, which is in taking place at the moment. So we're looking afresh at the way that we do business. Secondly, the government have just recently published statutory guidance on overview and scrutiny, which is about good practice, so that will infiltrate, come into the scrutiny work that we do at the moment, and overview and scrutiny management board will be reporting on that for the benefit of all the scrutiny committees. And thirdly, I think it's also right to point out that we look around and try to pick up lessons from other local authorities, and in the particular case, what can we learn from Northamptonshire in terms of, not necessarily good practice, but the way things happened there which led to problems, and to make sure that we do not in any way follow that line. Three areas, financial resilience, the culture of the organisation, and accountability. And we've done that work jointly with the audit committee. So in a sense, we are looking not just at the scrutiny issues in terms of this report, but we're, the individual scrutiny issues that are dealt with by adult social care, for example, or children's services or health, but looking at some of the broader issues. And I think that that will in future be of importance. Each of the scrutiny committees have reported within this document, and I'm sure that if anybody wants to raise either as the chair of that scrutiny committee or as a member or out of interest, then we've got the people here that can answer those questions. As I said, looking, looking forward, we've got the review, we've got the Northamptonshire lessons, and also the statutory guidance. I want to finish by thanking Ray Wooton, councillor Ray Wooton, who's the vice-chair of the committee, and I want to thank him for his support to me, but also to every member of the council who takes part in scrutiny work, because it's the public face, we are responding, in a sense, to decisions taken by the executive, and we're acting on behalf of the general public as much as anything else to hold the executive to account. And for those reasons, I commend this report to you. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder for that paper?
Chairman, I'm happy to second it, and I wish to thank councillor Parker for his kind comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any speakers on this? Councillor Hill.
Just very briefly, Chairman, on behalf of the executive, I'd like to thank the scrutiny work that's done by councillors across this chamber. I do try and attend overview and scrutiny as often as I can, and they do an effective job, and actually, their challenge and their constructive comments do make the job of our, on the executive, much easier and much more productive, I believe.
Any other speakers at all? Okay, can we now take a vote? All those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? And that is carried. Thank you very much indeed, councillor Parker. Item 14 is changes to the council's contract regulations. A report by the executive director of commercial has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to move this proposal. Obviously, we've done a review of our contract regulations, and I think these are some very common sense proposals which are being proposed this morning to the council. In essence, we are raising some of the thresholds in terms of where there has to be formal member decision-making, and we are a very large organisation, and so to say, £10,000 for an organisation which is spending probably a billion pounds a year is probably a little bit too bureaucratic. It's not just a question of formality. Once you go into the sort of member roles, then there is a lot of bureaucracy and work has to be done, which frankly, doesn't really, I think, really add much value. I think the safeguard we've put in also, even though the threshold will rise for various, various contracts which are outlined in the report, or the, usually the chief officer concerned, who is the person involved, will still have to consult and get the approval and the agreement of the portfolio concern. So there will still be member oversight of that, and of course, we need to make sure as part of the scrutiny committee, then there is a process, and we've had discussions with the chairman of the overview and scrutiny, how we can make sure that other members scrutinise that process. The other thing is the proposals are designed to make it much easier for small and medium enterprises, small businesses, to actually do business and do work for the council, because it's very important as a county council, we truly, we'd actually support and encourage small businesses in Lincolnshire to directly do work for us as opposed to subcontracting for somebody else. So I think those two proposals put together are their improvements, I would recommend them to this council.
Thank you very much. Do we have a seconder for that councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to second this motion. I'd like to reserve my right to speak later if required.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this subject? All right, we'll take a vote now. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Right, thank you very much indeed.
15 on the agenda paper is changes to the constitution. A report by the head of paid service has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move these recommendations. Obviously, as it says, the constitution's had some slight changes. I suppose the two main ones are the report from the head of paid services-
Right, thank you very much indeed. Fifteen on the agenda paper is changes to the constitution, a report by the head of paid service has been circulated, is there a mover and a seconder?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'd like to move these recommendations, and obviously as it says the constitution's had some slight changes, I suppose the two main ones are the report from the head of paid services about the new responsibilities of our new chief officer team, and then the second one is requesting that the corporate parenting panel, or subgroup as it is, now starts to meet in public, I think that's quite important, because I think if any members of the public want to understand, you know, the care that we and support that we give to our looked after children, you know, it is very interesting, I don't think people really know what, what is offered to these young people, they are treated as our own children, so I think that's a very good positive move as well, so thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, do we have a second?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'm very happy to second that and reserve my right to speak later if necessary, and I'd like to congratulate the new dream team, as I will call you, obviously you share my passion for golf, and we did have a rather interesting experience last week, thank you.
It was certainly interesting, my, my golf is abysmal, his was fine. Thank you, are there any speakers on this paper? Right, we'll take a vote now, those in favour? Okay, those against? Any abstentions? No, thank you very much indeed. We move on to item sixteen, motions on notice submitted in accordance with the council's constitution, I intend to allow one debate on the motion and any proposed amendments to it, I move that under paragraph twenty-one point one of the council procedure rules, of the council's constitution procedure rules thirteen point six B, thirteen point six Z, C, thirteen point six D, thirteen point six E, and thirteen point ten B are temporarily suspended, votes on the motion, each amendment to the motion will then take place at the end of the debate, and in the order that I will determine, do I have a second for this? Thank you very much. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Right, members are reminded of the rules, of the following rules of debate set out on page seven of the Order of Proceedings, which have not been suspended. I believe there is an amendment to this.
Normally, but if, if you want me to do that now, yes, the, I am proposing an amendment to the, to the Labour motion, which obviously will be seconded, so I reserve my right to speak later, Chairman.
Thank you.
Hopefully it has been circulated, so everybody has seen it, okay, thank you.
That's what I mentioned in the paper, yeah, right, councillor, is there a second for, councillor Davis?
Yes, I'm happy to second the amendment, we'll be bringing it forward.
Thank you very much. Well, the motion is by councillor Parker, would you like to move your motion?
Okay, so this is a climate change motion, start, we know from the paper that we've already put forward that we want to commit this council to declare a climate emergency, we want to make the council's activities carbon neutral by 2030, and we want to work in partnership, we want the central government to provide some funding, and we want a report back. I think we've all heard of Greta Thunberg and Sir David Attenborough, quite simply because they've been arguing recently very publicly and very clearly that we've got a major climate change problem. They attribute it to a number of reasons, but we can think about neglect of the environment, we can think about the wasteful use of resources, and to be honest, human greed. We know that three years ago, a hundred and eighty-five countries signed the Paris Agreement, committing the world to slowing down climate, global warming, but since then, the, the story, the narrative as it were, has changed from... Okay, so the, the narrative, the storyline about climate change has changed from being a problem that was about the future to a problem that's about here and now. A recent United Nations report spelt out two things, the first, the need for rapid action, and secondly, that what happens in terms of the ecosystem if temperatures increase by another half a degree Celsius, and we know in Lincolnshire, don't we, more than anywhere else, that forty percent of agricultural land is at or below sea level, if, if, if we have a current sea level rises by two thousand and one hundred, that's what, eighty years from now, we will have a problem. The point about the issue that we're here to discuss is about what we do about it, because it seems as though there are different approaches. This particular motion is a wake-up call, it's, it's a bit like an alarm clock, we think that when the alarm clock goes off, you respond, we don't want to be the sort of council that sort of reaches sleepily out of bed, puts the alarm clock off, and then says, I think I'll have another half an hour, we, we want action now. We want to follow up the, the United Nations Intergovernmental Paper on Climate Change, which talks about, there's lots of work still to be done in winning over hearts and minds, even amongst the committed nations, and I'll give you three, three examples, Norway, Germany and, and the UK, Norway's still pressing ahead with the oil exploration in the Arctic, the German government actually want to cut down a Hamburg forest to make way for a coal mine, and we're still as a nation pushing ahead with fracking for gas, so even those countries that are committed to acting on climate change are making a special exception for themselves. But what can we do as a council, because that's, that's the point of this motion? Want, we need to recognise the problem, actually recognise it by declaring that we see this as a problem, call it a climate emergency if you like, and that we need to move to being carbon neutral as fast as we can. Technology will help, but it'll only go so far, and we need individually, collectively, and as leaders, to be recognising that we must change our own behaviour and help other people to change theirs. I'll give you two examples, here in Lincolnshire, county council, is it good for the environment that last year officers and members of this council travelled over seven million miles to conduct council business? Was every journey by car really, really essential? And secondly, is it good for the environment, just a simple example, that in the members' room where we've just been this morning, there are about a hundred of these throwaway plastic cups like this for drinking water, what, the idea of throwaway plastic cups rather than reused ones like Christine over there is demonstrating, but that's the point. The point of the issue is that we have to examine every single process that we go through, for example, the move for, away from paper in, if we look around at the amount of paper that we've got here, when a lot of us have also brought laptops, there is a point about what we're talking about, it's not just about the doing of it, it's the thinking about the process so that we can make a major contribution to the, to the environment. I mean, one of the points that we, this, we have discussed ad nauseam for the last six or seven years has been austerity, I'd like to see councillor and officer time given as much time and attention and indeed enthusiasm to climate change as we've done in this council to austerity. Officers were completely taken up with it, as were senior members, about how can we tackle the problems of reduced government funding, I'd like to see that same tenacity applied to climate change. We need, as I said, to examine all of the contributions, the contributions to the way that we deliver the service, to see whether or not they help or hinder the county council becoming climate neutral. We know what we're talking about intuitively, but just to spell it out, car travel, lighting, heating, use of paper, use of plastics, and we also need to get this message across outside of our community, our local government community, into the wider community in Lincolnshire. You know, there are ways that people can help themselves, a couple of examples again, people can get smart metering so that they can track their own energy consumption and know when electricity is being used wastefully, carbon offset calculators, which show people how their lifestyle and travel arrangements impact on the environment. The net message we need to get across is we're all in this together, and that's why leaders are like, council leaders, county councils, district councils must take an initiative to make it local and relevant. I want to make the point, this is not a party political issue, I don't see it as that at all, conservative councils, conservative control councils have declared a climate emergency, I could list them Bath and North East Somerset Devon, Heryfordshire Mendip, North Somerset Oxfordshire Scarborough, going further than that, not just conservative councillors, but in Sunderland, you know, Labour heartland, it was the conservative councillors that, in opposition, who moved the motion exactly like ours, to declare a climate emergency, and that was agreed, the conservative motion was agreed by an overwhelming Labour group. In Oxfordshire, the Conservative group tweeted, and I quote, "Our group were pleased to unanimously support the Labour motion at full council to acknowledge a climate change emergency and pledged to make Oxfordshire County Council carbon neutral by 2030, basis of our, our motion." Much closer to home, yesterday, the University of Lincoln joined the global movement, that's it, that was its message, and declared a climate emergency. I just want to briefly say what the university said. Climate change... Climate change is the primary concern for young people across the world today, and that concern is shared by our community at the University of Lincoln. This challenge must be taken seriously if as a global community this threat is to be confronted. By declaring a climate emergency, we, that's the university, acknowledge the deep concerns of our students, our staff, and future generations, that's pretty good stuff, isn't it? We put forward this motion because scientific evidence shows that governments, both central and local, must act now to deal with a potential climatic catastrophe, we look for all party support, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, I want to kind of just build on, develop Rob's point, councillor Parker's points a little bit more, and really think about what this means for us, what it means for Lincolnshire, what it means for us as, as, as individuals and communities who live specifically here. What does, climate change will not affect all areas of the UK uniformly, in Lincolnshire we can see an impact, we will expect to see an impact on our environment, on our agricultural land uses, councillor Parker's highlighted, housing, coastal resorts and other factors. Councillor Parker's already drawn attention to the fact that we are absolutely blessed in Lincolnshire with some of the best agricultural land in the UK, and there is a very, very strong, very, very strong economic argument in preserving that, but also a social argument as well, in that agricultural land is an absolute key component of those wonderful villages, those wonderful communities that hold our county together. Much of our coastal area is at risk, I was at Skegness yesterday for a trustee meeting, I love Skegness, it's part of my social, it's part of my emotional, i- i- it's part of my identity as an individual. Places like that are part of all of our social and emotional heritage, and I'm sure that we can all think of places that mean that much to us. This isn't just about cold, hard, scientific facts in the future, this is also about a battle for places and for people that we love or that we should love, it's for all of our futures. So this motion isn't just merely asking for LCC to take the lead as a body, it's about taking that lead as, as politicians, as leaders of our communities. We need to show as the foremost democratically accountable body in Lincolnshire, that we are, that we will make the change and we can lead the change, because we can see from governments, governments all over the, all over the world, that this is going to require bottom-up action as opposed to waiting for national governments to tell us what to do. What I want to do now briefly is just pause and think about other benefits to our communities, to us as individuals, to us as an employer of becoming carbon neutral. These are just some random scattergun examples that sprang to mind to me last night while I was preparing, this morning I had the, oh, sorry, benefit of travelling in with another councillor, with councillor Cullen, we carpooled, we shared ideas, we talked, we shared examples, we built more of a relationship, what a, what a great opportunity that would be. What about a healthier workforce by encouraging more work, walking, cycling and running? School pollution, air quality for our young people by encouraging really proactively walking to school initiatives? Money saved in lighting, efficient heating control, why do we insist in this building of either freezing or burning our staff to death, it's one of the most uncomfortable buildings that I've ever ha, I've ever worked in, we would be more productive if we got that right.
Councillor Mrs Parkin, you've run out of time.
Let's make this an issue of pride in ourselves and also pride in our people and our places, thank you.
My apologies fellow councillors, because I went to councillor Hill for the amendment first instead of the proposition, we've had an amendment from councillor Hill, are there any others? If not, I will open the debate and I will go to councillor Hill. I'll go to councillor Hill again.
Chairman, I was just indicating to speak, I do apologise for that, I mean, I think this, obviously this motion is very opposite at the moment, because obviously the climate change debate is sort of raging quite fiercely at the moment, and there is a, obviously we know, a range of views, I mean, there is an impression that there is a consensus over this, but as we all know, at the one extreme, there are people who genuinely believe unless we do something dramatic immediately, the world will come to an end in a few years' time, at the other end of the spectrum, there are those people who genuinely believe it's all a load of nonsense and it's, it's just, just is not happening at all, and I think most people are somewhere in the, in the middle of that spectrum, and actually frankly, that's I believe where the council currently stands, where there is a view that, I think there is an acceptance, there is an issue we need to address, not only in terms of potential climate change, but also the massive increase in population in the world, which is now three quarters, has gone up, doubled in since nineteen seventy and will increase even more, and there is a question about how the planet will sustain those numbers and whether we do need to actually change our behaviour, so to speak, in terms of what we do. I think, and I, I thank councillor Parker for being very even-handed and recognising the work that this council has done over the last fifteen years or so in terms of our three, our two previous carbon management plans, which we reduced twenty percent from a baseline in twenty-five on six in the first plan, second plan, we reduced it by a further twenty-three percent, and then we have a further target which has recently been agreed cross-party by, by the scrutiny committee and then agreed by the executive, we'll actually reduce our carbon emissions by a further twenty-three percent, twenty percent over the next five years. I think there is a view, and our view certainly is, that to almost unanimously just pluck a figure out and say, well let's say twenty thirty, we've got to go carbon neutral, is not a realistic or achievable target without some very draconian measures, I mean, councillor Parker mentioned about less paper and not driving so much, we will be far into beyond doing that, and I think I need to remind members, we have a responsibility for all those vulnerable people out there, and, and also things like waste and all the transport issues, and frankly, to actually get to a target of twenty, zero carbon emissions by twenty thirty would mean dramatic, dramatic and draconian measures almost straight away, which obviously the motion at this stage hasn't gone into, so we are proposing to amend it so there is a target of going carbon neutral for this council by twenty fifty, that doesn't mean to say we are going to wait till twenty fifty, that means that is a more realistic target. I did mention my speech about credibility of politicians and the, and people getting very disillusioned with promises which aren't delivered, I don't think it would be responsible for us to make a, it'd be easy to say, oh yes, we'll go along with that, but I don't believe this council should behave like some other politicians, where we make promises which we know we can't deliver, I don't think we can deliver a carbon neutral by twenty thirty, but that does mean that we can, however, that we need to do all, all we can to make sure we can do that, we've been very successful, we've reduced our carbon emissions for the council by forty-one percent since twenty five, twenty oh five, twenty six, and of course, as an incident, we've saved money as well, so we've, we're on the right road, and both this county and this country, the Labour, the country itself has reduced by forty-one percent, so that's a good target on the way forward compared to many other countries. So that's a good target on the way forward compared to many other countries, China and others, where we seem, they seem to be going in the wrong direction. And I think it's a particular issue for our council as well, because we are a very rural area, one of the most sparsely populated far-flung councils in the country with a spread of population across the whole county. We've got to make sure we have, we behave responsibly to making, making sure we deliver services, particularly those vulnerable people. And, you know, for example, you could say, well, let's go electric, let's have all electric vehicles and all the rest of it. Remind members that there is no infrastructure in place at the moment, in fact, there's no, there's no electricity in place at the moment, so to get to that target by twenty thirty is, what we'd have to do is, what we're suggesting, that people bike to, you know, carers bike to get to look after people, it's just not practical. Doesn't mean to say we're not committed to this agenda, but it's all a question of being, making sure, being responsible, working as hard as we can and coming up with something which is achievable and actually is going in the right direction. And obviously, one of the other issues that sometimes people say when they want to go carbon neutral, sometimes like nuclear power, of course, is one area where you could actually make huge strides in going carbon neutral, but some people don't seem to think that's, that's a worthwhile thing to do. That just illustrates what sort of things you might have to consider if you wanted to go carbon neutral so quickly. I'm a great believer in innovation and technology, and I'm sure with the, with the reforms and the incentives that government's putting on this, I'm very confident that will be new technology will come along in maybe ten years' time and we'll be looking at things completely differently, and hopefully we'll get to our zero target long before twenty fifty. But I think for the moment, we ought to remain where the House of Commons committee is, which is a target of carbon neutral by twenty fifty. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what councillor Hill's already said, but I'm very happy to second our proposed amendment. I came into this council in two thousand and five, and one of the first things I sat on, committee-wise, was environment, and we started talking about carbon management plans, I then went on to chair that committee. So the work that's been going on in this council, which has been cross-party and has been supported widely, and now I'm on the executive, we're driving the agenda forward. We are realistic and practical about what needs to be done. And I know what, you know, sea level rise looks like. If I need a reality check, I walk through my churchyard in Ingham Isles and look at the coffin, look at the graves of the dead from nineteen fifty-three as a reminder. I'm sure councillor Cullen in Mablethorpe has the same experience. So we're always recognising that we have a very vulnerable coastline and we have a lot of work to do to protect it and to protect the agricultural land that feeds our country. But we do need government to really start working out what they need to do in terms of making us a country fit for the future, a country fit for twenty fifty, a country that actually can deliver electric vehicles, and as councillor Hill has said, there's no infrastructure, we don't even have enough power to keep the lights on on the coast at the moment. We need to sort that infrastructure out, and that's not going to happen in two years or three years, it's going to take ten, fifteen years to deal with that. So we cannot physically meet a twenty thirty target, but we should set an ambition to be carbon neutral, and that's what's laid down here today. There is no point doing gesture politics, in my view. If you set a target, you have to deliver it. If you set an ambition, you should be clear with the public that you will deliver it, and you should know how you're going to deliver it. And there is nothing out there at this moment in time, from international governments or from national governments, that tells us how we're going to get there. There is a lot of discussion, lots of protesting and everything, but no practical solutions are on the table from anyone about how we're going to reach this zero carbon around the world. And we've got governments who don't even believe in it. China is not doing anything about it, America isn't. You know, so we have to, we have to recognise that the international community has its role to play, we have to recognise that national government has a role to play, and recognise we have a role to play. And I'm very, very clear that this council, all of us, and this executive, are absolutely committed to delivering a natural environment and a county fit for future generations. And I think the right way of doing that is the amended motion that we've put down. So thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, at the moment I have three speakers, councillor Overton, councillor Brewis, followed by councillor, Mrs. Cook, councillor Mrs. Overton, I beg your pardon. I would ask you to put your hands up if you wish to speak on this. Shall we go to councillor Mrs. Overton first?
Chairman, so what needs to change? I think we have to say that it's lots, and it's quickly. This is, there's been a huge sea change now, huge demonstrations, petitions on every aspect, whether it's plastic or other kinds of waste, whether it's clean air. Now is the time when we can see that the public are really strong on the issue of doing something constructive to improve this land, our country, and indeed our planet for our children and our children's children. Now is the right time to take that action. Can we really allow ourselves to get to the point where children are poisoned in the school playground? They cannot breathe their air, where children are told that they have to be limited in their playtime because the air is too dirty and they'll get poisoned. Is this really acceptable? I don't think so. I think we have to take a really strong action to do something about clean air and all of these carbon emissions that are damaging our world. If we had a child and we gave them a beautiful present and we got something really nice to give them for a special day, would we really trash it first and then give it to them? I think not. The world is the present that we give to our next generation, and that's why it's so important that we take good care of it. Looking at sea level rise for Lincolnshire, clearly an issue, and actually not just here. If you think about the other parts of the world, there are many places where the most densely populated parts of the world are actually close to sea level, that's where they live. If we do allow sea level rise, those people will need somewhere else to live. Where will that be? Let's think about that. We cannot afford to displace millions of people on this planet. What about the more extreme events that we would expect? Flooding, erosion, damage to habitats, plants, animals, and even also in other areas drought and water shortage as we get these extremes? Can that really be right, that we should allow that to happen? When we could have done something about it? What will our children's children say when their world is in such a state? What did you do? Ah, we waited a bit till the rest of the world caught up. It isn't going to be good enough. We need to take so many different kinds of actions, but it doesn't have to interfere with economic development necessarily. This is a different way of doing things, and it can be done, whether it's planting trees with the help of the Woodland Trust or the Wildlife Trust, a whole host of things we can do, and we must set our mind to it right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is councillor Brewis.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll try and keep three minutes going. I've been fascinated in this subject, as you all know, since I was ten. I already knew that to become an expert on something, you have to pick something nobody else knows anything about. And I looked at the paper I wrote when I wrote, it's called A Personal Guess Into An Uncertain Future Global Warming, which I wrote in two thousand and three and revised in two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten, and I've given talks both in Lincoln and elsewhere to groups about this for a long time. I was so interested in tsunami when I was ten too. When I took my daughter to California, we parked one night and in the morning she said, Dad, how could you? She was looking at the map, what if there'd been a tsunami? This was obviously before two thousand and four. Her friend said, what's a tsunami? She said, he knows about things like this, look where he's left his daughter for one night. Look at the gravel and you drive, if your gravel has small fossils in it, it was dumped in one night by the third Strega tsunami in five thousand five hundred B.C., which is where most of our gravel came from. They occur about ten thousand years apart, so if you will touch wood and hope you're okay for two and a half thousand years. Everyone on the human race has to take some serious action individually, and at the very end, I'll tell you what my personal little action is going to be. Or we will happen, what happened in the last Ice Age, when Toba erupted and it brought the last glaciation on, the incipient human population, our ancestors, was reduced to fourteen thousand in total, a thousand breeding pairs. All I can say is they got pretty busy, didn't they? We've all got to take action, and does it really take, who is my current heroine, a sixteen-year-old Swedish girl, Greta Thunberg, to remind us just how desperate it's going to be for our children and grandchildren? She's even mentioned the albedo of the planet, reflectiveness, and how pleased do you think I am to hear that there are serious study of trying to refreeze the Arctic, because it's the reflectiveness of our planet that will save us? I'm very bothered about one thing in both things, we haven't got very long, I suspect we may already have passed a key tipping point, and that what we do has to be far more dramatic than we are suggesting at the moment. And the point Martin's made, every country in the world has to do this, and I despair when I listen to some of the more stupid leaders, not so much here but around the world. So what's my little tiny action going to be? We start to start eating food in season. So I'm no longer going to buy any blueberries, much as I love them, and if you look at them in the winter, they say grown in Chile, so my little act is going to be to stop eating blueberries in the winter. I will be crying massive of tears, but that's my one for today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, and many congratulations to you and the vice-chairman on your appointments. Councillor Brewis talked about little actions. Well, mine not so long ago was to go paperless at this council after being horrified that I filled a giant, not a normal wheelie bin, a giant wheelie bin from, from the commissar's office, full of council papers just from this council and just in two years. So I would urge all other members to go paperless as well. I have broken my rule, I have one bit of paper today, but I need that as this is something I feel very passionate about. Last night, I attended a panel event at Lincoln University raising awareness of the Environment Act. Representatives from the Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust, Lincoln University, and a member from the city of Lincoln were also on the panel, were on the panel, I wasn't, sorry. I learnt some shocking facts related to climate change given by Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust, such as by twenty thirty, we will not have access to enough water in the UK based on the current situation, and Lincolnshire, being one of the driest counties, will be hit even harder than other counties. The panel also talked about flooding on the Lincolnshire coast and how the government sent the army to the Lincolnshire coast last year as a precaution. Our climate is telling us we need to act, and our residents are also telling us we need to act now, as seen by the growing popularity of groups such as Extinction Rebellion, and the fact that events such as last night's panel event are being held in our county about the environment and climate change. It is not just, it is not just something that radical protesters, as the leader has called them today, are concerned about, it is residents of all ages and backgrounds. Climate change is not something that is affecting another region of our country, or affecting another country, or is simply not happening at all, it is affecting our whole planet now. When asking what is the biggest issue facing our environment, last night's panel agreed that it is engaging people and getting them to understand the urgency of acting. As Lincolnshire County councillors, we can play a crucial role in engagement. Our role is to represent and engage the public. We have to listen to our residents' concerns about climate change, inform and educate our residents about the dangers of climate change, and work with our residents to do everything within our collective power to save our precious planet which is under threat. And this is why I wholeheartedly support the Labour motion, which tells our residents that Lincolnshire County Council recognises there's a climate emergency and will do everything within our power to prevent a crisis from happening. Twenty fifty is too late, I will be nearly eighty then, and my sixteen-year-old son will be my age, and goodness knows what state our planet and county will be then. On Wednesday, Lincoln Students' Union declared a climate emergency, as councillor Parker has said, Lincoln University declared a climate emergency on Thursday, and I hope that we all declare it today, but working towards a twenty thirty target, because talking about a climate emergency and then, and then it's twenty fifty for the targets does not imply that this council takes it seriously.
Councillor Renshaw, I think you were next to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. A lot of points I was going to make have been said, and so we won't waste time with repeating them, but we've completed all the soft targets, and as councillor Davy alluded to, we've, we're on the road, we're on the footpath, we've just started, let's continue, but in a much rapid pace. We've, we've only, really only shown tokens of intent. It's really time now to stop and get really serious, if we really care for those who will in future take custodianship of the earth. The challenge for us, as people have alluded to, and to me this is the biggest challenge, is to ensure that, not just to try, but to engage with the whole population, because we know just recently, we've knocked on a lot of doors, and people are divorced from politics, which as we know is reality. People just, no idea what's going on in the world, and it is our mission statement in life to make sure that those people know what, what it's all about. And there are opportunities, as well as failings in, in any policy, but, you know, we've got the Lincolnshire Transport Strategy, we're looking at that now. We could put in that Transport Strategy, which is at the very heart of carbon fuel that's wasted, we could put into that and make sure that we make it carbon neutral wherever possible. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Matthews, you were next, Colin.
Thank you. Mike, I'd like to apologise to you, because I forgot you earlier when I passed on my congratulations to Tony. The reason I'm really grateful for that, I'll just correct myself, is that it's easy to forget that people are what matter here. I'm backing the amendment, because actually, Lincolnshire County Council have done some really good work on this matter for the last, probably the last two decades. I was involved in a Royal Society committee addressing this very serious matter in the early two thousands, and I'm passionate about it, but I'm minded of the story, everybody, somebody, no, anybody and nobody, I don't know if you've heard that, but if you haven't heard it, go and Google it and read it, it's very interesting. Actually, everybody in this room, everybody in the chamber behind me can make an influence in addressing climate change. It is a very serious matter, and we should not be trying to score points in here and say it's the council's job, because actually, that's the worst thing we can do, is make it somebody else's responsibility. Lincolnshire County Council has got an excellent track record, it has done it in a measured way, it has walked the walk, it has performed actions, it has achieved stuff. Yes, there's a journey to travel, but we've got that journey mapped out. I think panicking and coming on board a bandwagon and saying, let's have an emergency now, is probably one of the worst things we can do, but we do need to do something.
Thank you very much, councillor Matthews. Councillor Mrs. Brockway, you were next.
Thank you, Chairman. I find it quite alarming, actually, that councillors are now suddenly deciding that they're going to declare climate emergencies. I have to say, where have they been? One thing I am very, very proud of with this council is if you look at our carbon management plan, we are already there, we have been there for a long time, and we are very, very serious about what we're trying to achieve here. I think one of the biggest problems is that when it comes to climate change, it's somehow out there, it's for the other person to do, it is for the other place. Now, Rob, I'm going to say something to you, I'm absolutely not attacking you here, but it's a serious point. You rightly talk about the plastic cup, so I have to say to you, why are you drinking from one? There's a young person up there... There's a young person up there in a green hat drinking from a flask, you get it, I get it, you know? As a passionate recycler, I think, and upcycler as well, I think we have to really think differently. There is a danger that we expect other people, we think we're doing it, and we almost don't realise that we're not. Think of those protesters in London who are very passionate, they set up the camp, their hearts are in the right place, they are serious, they are sincere. But why then did so many of them have single-use bottles and single-use cans? Now, it's not because they were being disingenuous or anything like that, it's because there is a great deal more education to do. The famous actress who flew over first class to support them, I'm sure she meant to support them, but the trouble is when she was challenged about her work and why she used such a gas-guzzling method of getting there, she has to fly because of her work. So my answer would be, change the way you work. I think, you know, it is absolutely right that we have to take things further. I am very worried that this declaration of climate emergency could turn into a dangerous bandwagon. We've declared an emergency, okay, but what have you done with that declaration? What have you actually done? This business of using in-season produce is absolutely right. Now, that's a wake-up call for me, because I go along and I buy tomatoes that are out of season, I will now stop. You know, but it's these little things, you think you're doing it, but when you actually pull your life apart and look at the way you're working, you're not. So I'm going to, I absolutely support the amendment to this motion, because it gives us an opportunity to go into it in depth, to continue the work that is solidly there. But I have to say, I think there are ways that we can push it forward much more quickly, and maybe, Chairman, next council, there shouldn't be any plastic cups available. So if you don't bring your cup, you're going to go thirsty. And, you know, I think actually that's a serious point. You know, the papers, you're dead right, we don't need this, there's nothing in here that couldn't have gone on our iPads. Let's turn down our papers, let's do it. You won't like it, but let's do it. Okay, thank you very much, Chairman.
Could I make a personal explanation in answer to Councillor Brockway?
Well, I've got quite a number of speakers here, so I might come to you later if you've got time.
Yes. So I wanted to address Councillor Brockway very briefly, to say, the point about bringing this in was to demonstrate it. Because if I hadn't, and if I hadn't... Can I just make the point that we've now got more publicity out of this together than we would have done if I hadn't?
Thank you, Councillor Parker. We now come to Councillor, where are I, has he gone? Oh, he's there.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I echo Councillor Hill and Councillor Davy, but I think what we're missing here is, I believe that what we're going to have to have is a technological solution to all this. You mentioned nuclear, and most people, when you say nuclear, think of nuclear fission and nuclear waste and Chernobyl and such things. But for decades now, we've been researching nuclear fusion, and at the Curran Laboratory, they've been doing this now since the early 70s. And it's a very, very hard nut to crack, nuclear fusion. And up until very, very recently, we got less power out than you put in, so it's a negative loss. But just recently, over at MIT across the Atlantic, their spark reactor has now produced more power than was put in. Not much, but it's pointing the way. And internationally, there's a thirty-five-nation research group based in France on the, it's called the International Thermonuclear Reactor. And that is expected to produce in the region of five hundred megawatts from an input of fifty megawatts by 2025. And then the nuclear industry are looking at commercially available nuclear fusion reactors in, from 2040 onwards, probably more realistically, 2050, which is why it coincides so much with our 2050 targets, because that's what the nuclear industry think. And at that point, we'll be able to generate as much electricity as we like to power all the electric cars, streetlights, and all this kind of thing, without any carbon whatsoever. It's a totally clean system. And government, of course, are responsible for putting in the money, and as it so happened, the Chancellor, Councillor, Chancellor Philip Hammond was at Cullum a week ago today, having his ear bent about this very, very subject. So hopefully, it's sunk in, and he and his partners are going to, sorry, he and his partners are going to push this programme ahead to make sure we get control of nuclear fusion as a commercial reality by 2050, and that will solve a huge amount of problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to give a long speech, I'm just going to ask a few simple questions, and I am reusing and reusing my bottle, by the way. Are we really leading by example? I've chosen to be on environment, and now it's called Environment and Economy scrutiny all the time I've been on this council, because I see the importance of this particular matter. But are we doing what we preach? Have I missed something, or where are our vehicle charging points? Are they installed yet in our car park? Why not? Right. What about this? It was issued to everybody and then taken back. Has it been reprinted, as I suggested it could be done on the back? Or is this a new one, or is it just the original one back again? We had great information by, when he was on with this council, of Doug Robinson, on the Environment Scrutiny Committee of what he was doing with the schools. But all the time, I've sat and said, why are we sweltering in this building? You see, these are the points. We have to change our behaviour. Now, I know next week, in that same committee, this Environment and Economy, we're going to talk about trading with Hunan in China. I don't want to attack you personally, Councillor Davy, but I know you also have interests in America. Here we are, trading with the two, two of the biggest, people who ignore climate change, who sort of deny it. Are we really doing, you know, carrying out what we preach? We should be leading by example. We try and at home generate as much electricity as we're allowed to, but I live marginally below sea level. I'm very, very pleased to see that the Haven Banks project, which is building up the height of the riverbanks and the sea banks, is going, is being future-proofed by every so often raising it a bit more. But need this be necessary? Right, we have to start here at home. Thank you.
Councillor Tricia Bradwell, you were next.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I wasn't going to speak, but I feel I need to. I do really feel I need to, because actually, anybody would think we hadn't been doing anything in this council, and we have. Quite, quite, you know, from what comes over from that side, we have been working in a reasonable way in reducing our carbon management in this council. And we have done a number of things over the last few years, but, you know, to say that we're going to do something in a shorter timescale than what's been suggested by the leader would be quite irresponsible. We have to do things in a managed way. When we're changing anything, when we're changing anything, we have to have the money behind us to do those changes. And I know you've all been moaning about this building, but actually, not to use this building to go off and buy, build a new one somewhere else would cost an enormous amount of money. So what I would say to you is that we switched our streetlights, and we had a number of complaints about switching our streetlights. We've upgraded our streetlights as well, and we were, before we did those, switching off and upgrading, we were using twenty-six million kilowatts of electricity, where now we've halved that to thirteen. So actually, that's made a big difference to what we're doing in this county. We've also upgraded a number of our council buildings, we've reduced the number of buildings we work from, we've actually got the building just across a car park, which we've refurbished and moved a lot of stuff into as well. With waste, yes, we're not there with waste, and actually, it's, as somebody said, this is a responsibility for us all with waste. Eddie is doing a lot, Councillor Poll, rather, is doing a lot of work with our districts, because actually, we're not one council, we've got seven district councils that collect the waste, and we then have to dispose of that waste. He's doing a lot of work with district councils to ensure that we're all collecting and disposing of the same thing. So again, that's been a big job in itself. But I do believe lots of things have been said. Councillor Overton says that our playgrounds for children are polluted, yes, in Lincoln City, in certain areas of this county, in our towns, yes, there would be a pollution problem. But in the main, we live in a lovely rural county, the air is good air for our children and for the residents here. So I think we do need to take this in a measured way. I think the council is very committed to actually reducing carbon management and our carbon footprint in this county. But we, you know, just because we've got people protesting, yes, people highlighting this situation, but I really do think that we need to do it in a managed way. We've got an Environment Scrutiny Committee that is monitoring this all the time. So I believe that we should support the amendment that we've put forward today.
Thank you. Councillor Lewis Strange, you were next.
I thank you, Chairman. I remember some years ago, this authority was one of the first in the East Midlands to sign up to the Nottingham Declaration on Climate Change. And since that date, we've taken forward all sorts of schemes. Tricia has spoken about streetlights, I could talk about the work we've done with the schools. I believe, and she'll put me right if I'm wrong, nearly two-thirds of our schools have had energy-saving boilers put in. These are really, really good things. We've worked hard with packaging, we took a supermarket, a couple of supermarkets to court for their over-packaging. Children have been, are talking to their parents about, one of the things at schools that goes on is that they talk about saving waste and eating the right food, and that's where light smoking stopped largely. It comes, it came from children going home and stopping mum and dad smoking. Now they're going home and they're getting switched the lights off and to eat more responsibly. Anyway, I pass on to something else, and I think we all accept that, well, I accept that climate change is happening. There seems to be far more events happening of intense rainfall or droughts. We, at the moment, we have a, we do have a lack of water at the moment. I know this is probably only just a snapshot in time, I think we're about five inches short of water, inches in Lincolnshire for our agriculture. Now, we're spending billions, Chairman, on an HS2 system, goes from here to there to save twenty minutes. Yet what we need to be doing is to be shifting water from Scotland and the, and the Peak District and the Lake District, pipe down across England to where the south and the east, where water is needed, because we should need that water for our farms and horticulture. So, you know, there are things we can do, but across the whole world, and it's no use, we must do all we can, and we are doing all we can here, but in a reasonable way, without busting ourselves to do it, because we haven't the money that we'd like to just turn, turn the, you know, do everything we'd want. But we, surely, the United Nations, a body which doesn't seem to have much weight these days, all the great nations of this world have to come on board and accept that things have to change. There are countries that are going to be flooded, and indeed, look at our east coast, we have, I know you're pointing at me, I'm just saying, our east coast, that's where the protection needs, we need to stop the rise of seawater. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Strange. Councillor Clark, you were next.
But I would like to say that in this day and age, youngsters get a lot of bad press. On this occasion, youngsters are showing us what we should be doing, and we should follow their example. I'm a bit confused with what Councillor Bradwell said. Is, are you accepting there's pollution in Lincoln School playgrounds, and that's acceptable? Sounded like it.
Thank you, colleagues. Councillor Moore, you were next, I think.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, today I will be voting in favour of the amended motion, but that is not because I disagree with the premise of Councillor Parker's motion, but I think the points that Councillor Davy made about politicians making responsible promises, and promises that we kept have to be, brought to mind, and I think to expect this council to operate, you know, neutrally, you know, carbon neutral by 2030 is unrealistic. I do believe that. And I think whilst we must strive to achieve that, I think the timescale set out in the amended motion is more practical, more realistic, and I think we must make clear in this council, residents in Lincolnshire should be under no illusion that Conservatives nationally and locally are doing more to tackle climate change than the previous Labour government. We have, we have a government, we have a national government who's working very hard, and locally, 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 we have, we've cut CO2 emissions by forty-one percent since 2008, we've had the development of the energy from waste plant, you know, we've reduced waste going into the ground by ninety-two percent in ten years. There's a whole list of things that this council has done. So residents, you know, members in the gallery should be under no illusion that we don't care about this issue, we absolutely do, and we want to make a promise that we can keep to the electorate.
Councillor Eddie Poll, you were next.
Thank you very much, Chair, oh god, my legs. Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, it is, it's all of those things. Yeah, I think there's been a lot of good sense talked today, and I'm really pleased to say that, and I thank Councillor Parker and his group for the acknowledgement of all the things that this council's done, because we're all part of this council, and most of these things have been done with your agreement and your support over the years. And the amount of carbon reduction we've managed to achieve is superb. The fact that we've set a target at 2050 for being carbon neutral doesn't mean to say we won't achieve it before then, nor that we don't wish to achieve it before then. But it's a realistic target, that means we will have the resources, the knowledge, and the time for infrastructure and technology to develop. Because one of the things that bothers me is, people keep saying, you live a long way away, you should come, you should get rid of that nasty old diesel car you drive and get an electric car. My nasty old diesel car doesn't contain rare earths, doesn't contain heavy metals, and it goes more than two hundred miles. And if you, if you look at the cost of an electric car, both to the planet and to your purse, and put that over a two-hundred-thousand mile a lifetime, then it probably works out a bit cheaper than a diesel car. Except that, because it's only got a range of two hundred miles, it's going to take you more than one lifetime to achieve the two-hundred thousand. So I think, you know, there's a lot to be said for realism when you come to look at things about climate change. Yeah, well, I don't really know what that's about. Kate, you said the government called in the army to help with the coastal stuff. Actually, the Environment Agency asked for military assistance because we were expecting, no, we weren't expecting high tide, we got the high tide, we were expecting the atmospheric depression to coincide with the top of the tide, in which case it was likely to be over top of the defences and stuff, and evacuation would have been needed. We were really lucky, we escaped it by an hour, that's not very much, you know? And I think that, so the greatest dangers we face, is it climate change, is it sea level rise? No, it isn't, it's complacency. And the fact that we're now looking at a 2050 target doesn't mean we're complacent about any of those things, it just means we're trying to be realistic. And I think one of the most important things we could do as a bunch of councillors, as a council, is to use our power of influence to try and make other people realise that there is an imminent danger facing us. And I'll tell, I'll give you an indication of how complacent people can be. Our local MPs, we've got a big splash on the front of the paper yesterday saying, the Environment Agency should stop talking about this flooding nonsense. Flooding nonsense? Flooding nonsense. 366 times in the past year, the water has been higher than the land. 300, that's not, that's not a minor problem, that's a major issue that we need to address. And if MPs are complacent, no surprise there, but we certainly aren't about either climate change or the imminent dangers of sea level rise, and we're determined to do all we can to make that happen, make those changes come.
Our final speaker, unless anyone else puts their hands up, is councillor Matthew Fido.
Start off by echoing some of the sentiments put forward by our front bench. I think we can be very proud of collectively what everyone in this council has achieved together. I secondly want to second councillor Bruce's comments about eating seasonal food more often and especially looking forward towards Brexit supporting our British farmers, especially in this county, the breadbasket of the country. I often myself parade around my reusable coffee cup, not in any way redistributed from my dad at all, like my good colleague Mrs Talbot and Mrs Brockway. I think individually, there's so much we can look to do in our own lives, how we can improve and reduce our carbon footprint. I'm the sort of chap, for example, who puts on an extra layer instead of, instead of putting on the heating. I haven't put on my heating since late February. Turning off lights in rooms that we're not using, I'm sure I'm not the only person in this room who grew up with a mum shouting, it's not Blackpool illuminations in here. I, like my good colleague councillor Mrs Cook, am just only sort of reducing the number of papers that I get. I'm getting more and more through my tablet and I urge councillors to do the same where possible. In my day job, in the private sector, I'm pushing my company to use recycled paper where possible on non-official documentation, as well as redistributing a number of documents to clients where possible electronically to reduce carbon waste there. In the division that I represent in the south of Lincoln, we're very privileged to have fantastic cycling infrastructure and many private companies, as well as this council, I believe, offer tax breaks to people who wish to take up cycling as a method of transport. And I commend the colleagues opposite as well for their car sharing and anyone who wishes to car share with me and be the knoll to my Liam Gallagher is more than welcome to do so. I'm also pleased as well to hear more about the introduction of electric and hybrid cars, especially in our urban areas, and I look forward to the rebranding of Top Gear to becoming Top Plug. And for the record, in terms of looking at energy for this country as well, I think in the short to medium term, I do support things like nuclear energy as we look more towards developing green energy such as offshore wind turbines. And for the record, myself personally, based on research that I've done, I'm against fracking. And I want to also, on a final note, build upon the success I think that this government has had with the environment. Recently, in early May, we saw that this country had gone eight, eight or so days producing coal-free electricity, which I think is a fantastic achievement. To put this into perspective, the last time that this country had gone such a period of time without using coal for electric, Queen Victoria was still on the throne, William Gladstone was currently serving his second term as Prime Minister, Lincoln City Football Club hadn't even been founded yet, and I was still a twinkle in the milkman's eye. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fido. Councillor Parker, would you like the right of reply?
I think the starting point for this right of reply is that the message that's coming across is we must do something about climate change. Okay, there may be arguments about how quick, but I think that the way that we ought to put it into practice is that we're saying, not just as individuals, but the council is going to do something. Practically, we could, at the next council meeting, not have papers in here and no plastic cups. We've got to demonstrate that this is a message that's been received and understood and that we are responding. And in a sense, my question really is a hypothetical one to officers. How differently would you respond if motion A, 2030, got passed, or motion B, which is 2050, got passed? Would we move slower? That's the point. Because starting from this, one of these two motions being passed, then officers are charged with doing something. And the thing about it is that we don't want them to proceed as though 2050 is a long way away, whereas 2030 is nearby. Now, the whole point about it is the message, because there's a difference between passing a motion and things happening. And one of the things that we're all keen on is to see an immediate reaction, immediate, you know, starting from next week, what will be different about this council, this council? And I think that one of the things that always demonstrates action is quick wins. And I'd like the executive members, leader of the council, and Eddie, for example, to be coming up with some quick wins that we can do easily. One of them we've talked about in group leaders is about the idea of moving towards paperless. Okay, now, can we speed that up? Can we make the full council as an example, a meeting when we do not bring papers here? Now, that would be a declaration to the world that we're listening. I know we had a joke about this, councillor Brockway and I, but it's an example, isn't it? And if we all came up with one, then we'd have 70 examples of the way that we could do our business differently. Now, if that is the result, then I think that the Labour motion that came in the first place has been very worthwhile, but I still urge you to back it.
Thank you very much. Now, we will now take the vote on the amendment. So those in favour of the amendment? Right, well, I think unless there are any dispensations, I think that is carried. The amendment is carried. Well, I have asked any extensions. I have asked if there are any extensions, and I would remind members in the public gallery that this is a formal meeting. Thank you. This is a, if... You will be removed. If I get any further interruption, you will be removed. Colleagues, we will close the meeting forthwith.[1127.63]